Are you ready? Good for you.
That's good. We got to talk through, right? We got some ideas, right?
Yeah, well, we got lots of ideas. It is, I'd really like to decide.
You all should be here shortly.
Are you going to say anything on Wednesday?
Although, this might be. Because, yeah, it's kind of brings, probably. And then, we're going to take the other one out. Good morning. No, that's all right. I'm extended to this place. Yeah, mine's so, so likey. So, we started with that, some exact non-advanced. This is terrible. How am I doing today? Donna told me. I thought it was on a Tuesday or Wednesday, and she had a strep throat, because she was going to try and come in virtually, is what she was trying to do. She said she felt good, but didn't know if she was going to be contagious or not. Okay, so, Justin, you've given us 182 pages?
I did something.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
She was waiting for me, asking me to date.
I could start at noon.
Probably, I've been waiting too long.
Okay. I heard you still have Friday's every time. I, I heard crying out in forest, it must have been tree, right? Well, we'll start with non-arranged participation. See, we at least have Nate, Paul has joined us. Nate, are you looking to speak this morning?
I'm sorry?
Are you looking to speak under non-arranged this morning?
No, no, I'm just observing.
Okay. Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Go on, someone.
Yes.
Joe, anything to add this morning?
Nope, thanks.
Thanks for joining us.
Steve joining.
This is Steve, right? Steve, thanks for joining us. Anything to add this morning under non-arranged participation? You are. Okay. Don't look at the agenda, it's, I'm out. Oh, if anybody notices, anybody else enjoying us, just call my attention to it.
Oh, it's awesome.
We can take participation anytime if somebody wants to talk to us. Can you lead us into the next item?
Want to do a survey update? So, following our last meeting, Josh and I took a crack at making some updates based on council's discussion. We deleted as many questions as we could based on what they wanted eliminated. We made some changes to some questions, we reworded some questions, we added skip logic to questions. And I know that Jamie also provided some written comments, questions, and then we were able to incorporate some of it, some of it we left for council discussion. I don't know how, how deep council wants to get into it, because we just want to tackle specific questions or comments that, that folks have.
Yeah, so. So, one of the things when I was reading this came to my mind was that the question of where do you live? Like, do you live in the city or, you know, outside, in the zip code or outside of it? There's now sort of like at the bottom part of the demographic questions. But, to me, some of the questions on this survey pertain generally if you live in the city of Dexter. So, is there a way that we can put that question sort of as the first question? So then we can build logic for those that don't live in the city and can't actually answer those questions, then don't have to answer those questions.
It probably depends on which questions are applicable, specifically to city residents, and which ones aren't. The challenge is, in order to do skip logic, you have to add agents. And so, basically, if you answer one way, you skip to a certain stage, and if you answer another way, you skip to a different page. It isn't a matter of being able to pick and choose which question someone can answer or can't answer based on how they answer question number. Like, you, you basically have to have all of the questions that they can answer in a row, and all the questions that they can't answer in a row.
On that point, I think there are probably two different perspectives to consider. There's whether or not we want to know the opinions of people who don't live in the city of Dexter. It's, I thought in the past we talked about having it open as broad as possible, if people could respond to whichever question. And then, on the backend, you would just filter out, you would look at the results based on what we had confirmed. So then, the trade-off in that case, if that, if we're okay with that approach, the trade-off is that you might increase the respondent burden of those who don't live in the city of Dexter, because they might recognize that and find some questions be less relevant to that. So the trade-off is, again, so the trade-off is, they might think that survey is more tedious. I think that's a worthwhile trade-off, and I would rather that it would be non-residents who, I guess, have that experience that maybe to miss the opportunity to collect at least some information from them on certain questions.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we can, we can run it and analysis after the fact, filtering out those that answered as, as city residents.
So, with that, I would also then suggest to put the question of where do you live at the beginning? So, the survey taker knows that this is, if they're not living here, they're still answering questions. So, at least it gives sort of like an indication that there are some questions that might be just pertaining. You know, if, for example, they get to the election question, what is your preferred method of, you know, answering? That's really for the, the city residents, right? Because we can't state anything for outside of the city, right? So, that's, at least gives an indication that this is for a bigger group of people. So when they get to that question, they're like, oh, I'm not living here, maybe this is not pertaining to me. And it will include the chance of people dropping and not finishing the survey, where their questions are not relevant to them. But if there is an indication of like, oh, we are getting answers from all sorts of people, then they're like, okay, this does not pertain to me, I'll continue.
We could, I don't know, if you looked at the intro, we could add something more to that intro, blur to that.
Yeah, that as well.
That at least keeps the questions clean, so you could, I mean, work out the reason that, say, we're interested in, you know, input from those in surrounding communities, you know, as well as the city of Dexter, the question's not relevant. You know, skip it, I, we could do something there, I think that may be the place to clarify the purpose and intent.
I agree, good suggestions. So, let's just flip through this, if that's okay.
Yeah, I would be happy to do a question by question, I just don't know what people's tolerance for that is.
Well, let's just do that, let's just flip that. Everybody, outside of what we just talked about, I'm just going to refer to my, I'm starting on page four, if that's okay. Is everyone okay with that question? Or from Dexter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, let me just ask questions off, I, I like that question, I like the traces. What are we going to do with that data?
It's something to, I don't see it as a throwaway question, it might be like a framing question, where you're priming respondents to think about life in the city of Dexter.
So, I'm going to.
So, it could be.
And, 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 and there are a couple that, that have actionable.
More specific things.
Yeah, so like, you know, I, I believe there should be more public or downtown, you know, we, we could do something with that.
Well, well, and I guess, do, would you want to say? Would you want to add the word general as an intro?
You did generally agree or disagree with all the things?
No, 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 just like. Generally speaking, how would you rate the city of Dexter as a place to live?
Oh, oh, we're, we're somewhere.
Okay. If I'm okay with that too?
And if I may add as, as well, a couple of questions, we also have to put the original survey, so this would be some benchmarking, to let the city, I'm just reading some change.
Sure, makes sense, yeah, that's a good point, okay. Okay, so on page five, question two is, is a multi-part question. Yeah, I believe there should be more public art in downtown. I believe downtown Dexter is an active environment downtown. I believe that there are sufficient number of restaurants downtown. There are sufficient number of places to shop downtown. I believe there are sufficient number of parking spaces downtown, I believe that it is easy to cross the street downtown. So these are all questions. Well, whether you're a resident or not resident, the data is still important to us, right? I believe that downtown is accessible for people. You have of, of with, is that how we want to say that there? Of with mobility? Now, just that could be. Yeah, I believe that there are sufficient number of bicycle racks downtown, I believe that downtown Dexter is a fun place to visit and walk around. I believe that downtown Dexter is clean and well-maintained. Those are all good, very, good things to know.
So, with this set of questions.
Hopefully, we rate very high on agree there.
In this set of questions, I kind of, I omitted some and reformatted others, and I'm trying to find where I moved these to, so I can point you to it in the packet. So, I don't, I can't see the PDF number. Because they don't show on the screen, I can pull it up on my screen. Do, can you see where I?
Yeah, one, one.
One page, yeah, so, and a couple of. Yeah, so, some of them are under public works, street sidewalks and parking.
I didn't do the, the question.
Oh, sorry, seven.
Okay, question seven.
Starting around question seven.
Page thirty-six in the packet.
And I can pull it up on my computer too, so let me, so I think some of those questions, so, public art, I, let me see where I have that. I'll have to make sure I have that in there. And, and active and vibrant downtown, I thought that was one that could go away, I didn't know what we would do with that. So I propose that as a deletion. For restaurants, places to shop, those questions ended up. Excellent, sorry, there's a lot to keep track of. Let me just go to the ones about parking that are in here. So, like, is eight where they talk about bicycle rack, did they talk about bicycle racks in this section?
Yes, they do, yep.
Yeah.
Third one from the bottom, on page five.
Yeah, so instead of saying, I believe there are sufficient number of bicycle racks downtown, my number eight says, where, if anywhere, would you like to see more bicycle racks, parking spaces, or accessible parking spaces? So I kind of combined a few, and, and left it as an open-ended. So instead of somebody just, like, if somebody disagrees with that, I know there might be a, in some spots, after these long grids, that sometimes there's an open end to say, if you said disagree to any of these, tell us what you wanted to tell us. I think it just might be easier for respondents, if we are looking to gather more specific input on where they disagree on some of these, to ask, either ask an open end that's specifically addressing that, like in this format, or, so in number nine, where I slightly adjusted the wording to say, is the city accessible to people with mobility impairments? Yes, and then no, and then you can have a question format where the no is in other specified, so then there's like a box where they can write more. So I just thought there was potentially a way to reframe or re-ask these questions, so that we can more immediately get the follow-up of what specific improvement, you're disagreeing, what specific improvement do you want? But it's not, or like, if somebody just says yes, they just move on. But if somebody doesn't say yes, I don't want to frustrate them to have them feel like, I want to tell you more, where do I tell you more? And there's a lot that we ask about, that if we wait till either after the grid or at the whole end of the survey, if somebody can remember all the specific points of feedback they had. So that's generally, generally the approach I took with those sorts of grids was splitting them up into separate questions, so that we could directly and immediately ask about the specific feedback. Is the city, is the city clean and well-maintained? Yes, no, please specify areas needing attention. Is it easy to cross the street? Yes, no, please specify where it's difficult to cross the street. Do you have enough time to cross the street after pressing the activate crosswalk button? Yes, no, please specify where you do not have enough time to cross the street. And, there were a few, across the survey, there were spots where we talked about like streets and parking and things like that, and a few different spots. And so then I was able to sort of put those all in the same area. Anyway, so I guess maybe the question to pose is, if you had a question that is, I believe that downtown is accessible for people with mobility impairments, agree, disagree? Are you content with the level of information you get from that? Would you prefer a specific question that says, is it accessible? Yes, no, please specify where it can be improved? I think that general form is something to discuss.
Okay, thoughts?
I, my, my, my only concern that is that breaking them out into specific questions on their own adds time to take the survey. And it, it's already pretty long.
Can't we just add at the bottom of this list, like, if you have any feedback about any of these questions, put it here? I mean, not worded exactly like that, but.
Yes, you could, you could, you mean, just a, just a.
Like an open box about a type of more.
Says, please, please share any thoughts on above? Or to explain them above?
Yeah, because that way the feedback's immediate, they're, they're, it's not like they're rated till the end of the survey. They can say whatever they want.
So one thing that can happen with grids, and again, I mean, people can decide wherever they want. One thing that can happen with grids is something called satisficing, where respondents are not actively engaging in each question, and they think all questions take on a certain form or directionality, and then just get in the pattern of agree, 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 and you get something called straight lining. So sometimes what you do is you flip the wording of your question to sort of like catch people to see, oh, but they agreed to all these, but they didn't agree with this, and that's logically inconsistent, so they must not have been paying attention. So, I appreciate the point about surveying. I think sometimes it's okay if something takes longer, if what you're getting is a respondent who's engaged in the question.
And the feedback on that, the respondent, it's how they feel they're actually being heard with the way the question is written. And if you've got just this list of wrong questions, which are good questions, if the three options really don't fit within how they think in their mind, they will get the impression you really are dispossessing what I've got to say. I, I, I happen to agree with Jamie, it's both from personal and professional. It could go a long way.
I like the open dialogue box idea.
Following the grid? Or with any question?
The, the. Well, I think anybody that, anybody that's going to click on this is going to take the survey. I don't, I'm not, I don't, I don't think people are going to, if they want to provide feedback, I think that's a survey. I don't, I guess, I don't, I don't fully worry about people getting into a pattern to just get through it. It's always going to be more not completed, if that's the case. Or we're going to provide feedback, but maybe I'm. You know, you know, I, I, I think you're either, you're the type of person that's, that wants to fill something out, or you're not going to do it, is kind of my, my thinking, but maybe that's a naive thought. I, I'm generally okay with these questions, if somebody wants to, you know, like, you suggested, do we ask about Dexter being active and vibrant? I don't know, did we ask that in previous surveys, is that a, is that a carryover from another?
I want to say the vibrant.
I think it might be.
One is.
Okay. But I, I like, I think the simple way to, the simpler way to do this is to give people opportunities to share, share their thoughts on your book. If they want to type it out, they can type it out.
There could be a benefit then, and maybe it's already been achieved here, I'm not sure, I haven't looked closely, and just making sure that, like, items are grouped together, and even if you have to split a grid, where this is the grid that's about parking, this is the grid that's about.
I like that term a lot.
Mobility, this is a grid that's about community development opportunities, and that sort of thing. So at least there are head spaces in.
Well, this makes me agree with the following statements regarding our downtown.
Right.
You know, or something like that, or, but I, I, I was on, I like the group of thought.
So I did have a question, so when I reworded them, I omitted downtown. We do have, like, public art, for example, we have public art at downtown, so that's not specifically downtown, maybe there's a spot where people else want art, do people want, they got the extra crossing plaza, we've got the area of vibrations. Is there a reason we want to restrict people's thinking to just downtown? Particularly in terms of community development, because we do have other areas of commercial development.
So, so, so not necessarily, I think, the, this set was specifically designed to focus on downtown, but that there are, there are other categories throughout, so, you know, then there are, you know, public safety, community development, BBW sections of, of the survey.
But we don't, for example, say, we don't have a corresponding question that says, do you want more bicycle racks somewhere else? So we don't ask about bicycle racks, or if it's fun to walk around somewhere else in downtown, or if it's clean and well-maintained somewhere else, if we don't have those, and so.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked the question back on this one, to get started, and I could ask this on everyone, what are we going to do with this data?
Well, I think if it comes in the format I have, we get very direct feedback on specific areas of concern residents have. To me, it seems more clear what I would do with the data, if I have individual questions with immediate open ends to say, you know, where accessibility needs to be improved, people are going to tell us if they have ideas, where, what areas need to be better cleaned and maintained, or is it difficult to cross the street? I think that's where we're going to get potential opportunities for action. So to me, it's a more direct path from question to action in this revised format than maybe in this grid.
I agree with Jamie and Michelle on this, because if I'm taking the survey and I know that, you know, all the crossings to me is good except for one, if I say agree, there is no way for me to say where is that crossing that I don't, you know, find easy. Or I could say disagree, but then, that isn't also not a complete information, because I'm not fully dissatisfied with the entire downtown's crossing, you know what I mean? So it's, and it's more engaging to be able to say just other than agree or disagree. And from the resident's perspective is that, no, we want to know those specifics that you have issues with or don't have issues with.
Well, so, so let me ask a question, though, why don't, why don't, if, if, let's take, let's take the crossing of the street. Why wouldn't you just put the question as, where is it difficult to cross the street?
Well, I would like that.
I mean, if the concern, the concern is crossing streets, why wouldn't we just directly ask the question, open end, not the type that is with it?
Oh, I like that, I, I'm just saying that in this format, that I believe it's easy to cross the street downtown, agree or disagree, doesn't give us much, you know, because somebody might disagree just because they have an issue with one crossing. What, what is that disagree data gives us, you know what I mean? So more detail, how do we get more detail?
I'm trying to spirit, I'm trying to make sure we're attracting the survey maker on what, what questions are we trying to ask? You know, we've, we've, he's broadly put a bunch of topics in front, we've talked a little bit, but, I mean, I, I'm trying to ask the question, what specifically are we looking to learn? That's, 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 I think, coming out of our goals and objectives, right? What are we trying to learn? And that, those are the questions you should ask.
Yeah, well, I think it's areas where service needs to be improved across a variety of domains, and I think it's.
What?
Areas where service, public services need to be improved across, across a variety of domains. I think the questions about street sidewalks and parking, I think, you know, I, we worked them, you know, trees, I guess there was trash code enforcement, and there were questions about finance, tax, and, I mean, all those topics I think are relevant, and I think what, what I feel like I'm trying to learn is, what are the suggestions for improvement? And so, yeah, to your point, so question eight, on my version, I said, where, if anywhere, would you like to see more bicycle racks, parking spaces, or accessible parking spaces? That is more phrased in that question, in that, that direction of where does service need to be improved versus is service adequate, yes or no?
The only thing I would say there is, is, I would put, if you say, where, if anywhere, would you like to see more bicycle racks, parking spaces, or accessible parking? I would probably divide how, I would probably have one question related to bicycle racks, and another question related to parking, I would break that up. I would say at the end of each one, if none, write none. Or something to.
Yeah, so this is proposed to be an open end, so if they leave blankets, like implied.
Well, wait, I think, okay, I think we need to tell them that, though.
Yeah.
You don't have a suggestion there. You're supposed to, that's anti-intuitive to a survey.
Well, that's why you phrase it in a way like nine through twelve are worded, it's clear, is it, that if they say yes, they didn't have a suggestion. If they had a suggestion, they said no, and they provided the suggestion.
I wonder, there's just difference there, right?
Right, so I mean, so why, we could rephrase eight to be more like nine, and say, does the city have a sufficient number of bicycle racks? Yes or no, please specify where additional bicycle racks need to be provided. I mean, we could do, eight could be worded more like nine through twelve. Because there is that issue with an open end, you don't know if somebody skipped it because they missed it, or because they didn't have an opinion. And would you rather want respondents to have to write the word none every time and read that additional instruction? Or would you rather have them just click the button?
It could done anyway, like I said, I just tried to get the question more directly to the, to the, what we're trying to learn.
Well, I guess I would reword, I would reword eight to, to be more like nine through twelve, and I would, it would be fine to separate. So the issue you're coming up with is, you know, it's like triple barrel, you're asking about three things in one question, which is less of a problem when you have an open end than it is on a multiple choice. So if we're switching it to a multiple choice, then I think you would want to separate those, because in reality, in theory and likely in reality, people's responses are going to change based on which thing you're actually asking them to evaluate. So you could split eight into three questions in the form of nine through twelve.
Yeah, Jamie, I, I could go a lot, a lot of ways with all this. What I, what I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm hearing from this body. And again, all of this, all of this is good work. I, I could issue any one of these, you have to follow the footprints back on some of this, okay? I, I'm, I'm trying to find out, you know, what is it we're trying to learn that applies to all those objectives? And like, like, um, Justin's question two, I believe there should be more public art downtown. I don't need to know where the evidence is. Personally. I mean, we've, we've, we've always left that to staff and. Our team, we sort of got set, set areas. You know, if, 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 if the sentiment came back strongly, agree there should be more art, then I assume we would use that. To break strong work, we add, add more art. Right, and at one time, there was gonna be a piece of art on the side of the whole Blackwell building, I heard the. Hiccup Rising, or whatever it was, I think I remember that.
Yeah, I might not be, but I think it was Hiccup.
You know, it was focused there because it was a, it was a theater place that they, just where people were gonna be, you know, now it's not used by anything, so it's kind of a weird spot to have a piece of public art. But.
Well, so is that public art if it's on a private building?
Yeah, I, I, I must have tried to, I just.
No, and that's my, that's my, whatever, nevermind. I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend any more time on that.
I consider it hard to log myself, but, but. I was just trying to, that's what I'm getting at, is I, I would, I would ask them as direct a question as you can. Is my thought. To, to what we're trying to learn. I mean, if we, if, if the sentiment is, we're trying to be, you know, bicycle racks. You know, I would just ask, where would you like to see more bicycle racks? Okay, that, alright, then I, I'm, I'm okay, I would change it, I would change that question then to be more like nine through twelve. But I would separate bicycle racks out from parking spaces and accessible, those are, that's way too broad of a. And be specific to the one thing, and pair it with the yes, hell, or actually get the answer.
So, so we're, 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 we're gonna complete number two and add nine through twelve, and plus the three from question eight. From.
Well, I, um, you have one. I, I'm interested in, you know, some of these, some of these questions are still, I think, relevant, like. You know, do you still wanna know about downtown? Has it heard of art in downtown? I mean, if, if, I think, if it has an art, we should just take.
No, it, it actually, it just brought something interesting for me in mind that if we are asking like where. There is also the part that if we are asking where do you wanna see more parking, or where do you wanna see more things? We might not be able to put parking or bicycle racks or things like that in the spot that people are saying.
And I guess that's what I was trying to say.
How do we, um. Get that and, and. So, so that, that came to my mind too, and I.
Well, the, the, the other thing is, is you might get fifty responses at different locations too.
Yeah. So, so in that sense, do we? Yeah, I, I agree that I think we, we need to ask the question of ourselves of what is the data we wanna get out of it? And is it that level of detail, or is it that we can rephrase? The generality or introduction to number two in Justin's, um, to, to. To say something that if you have a specific examples, please add in the comment box, and we have a comment box at, at the end. If you disagree and have a specific examples, please add two.
I do want some feedback from respondents on what their specific suggestions are. If we're already going to them and asking them for some level of information, why would we stop? Why would we stop at what their ideas are? Why would we? Wait and take that feedback back to staff and council and then start brainstorming again, when that brainstorming might involve more outreach to the public? If you're already reaching out to the public, get as much information as they're willing to provide on a certain topic. So I do want some specific feedback from that. In terms of are we setting an unreasonable expectation that we're going to do something about it, I think it's. It's key how you're phrasing the no, please specify. So, no, please specify where accessibility needs to improve. I don't think that's communicating to the public, or. Communicating to the public that we're going to take action, or please specify areas needing attentions. Please specify where it is difficult to cross the street. Please specify where you do not have enough time to cross the street.
What are you reading from?
Um, the no, so nine through twelve.
Yeah, I still have that.
So, that format, I don't think misleads the public that we're going to. That we have the resources to address it, but how, so the question also was, how does this relate to goals and objectives? Well, if the public is coming to us with concerns, and a lot of them are mentioning the same thing, and we don't have in our budget something about improving street crossings, then we learn. Oh, we need to put that, because this is coming up repeatedly, so. I don't wanna stop getting specifics from them, and I don't think getting specifics from them communicates to them that we're absolutely going to do it, and I think. There's the great potential that we will learn something that we don't already have incorporated.
I, I think so. I, I'm not disagreeing with you, I think I wasn't clear. I'm trying to find a balance between. How do we get that information out of people and how not to have a survey that is like very long in terms of.
That, that's why I'm asking about topics. That's why I'm, I'm trying to ask about topics, like, do we, do you, do we need an art question? Because it's probably not a wrong question.
Yeah, I think some of these maybe.
If we're, if we're, if we, if we wanna ask about bicycle racks, then I agree, we should ask enough questions, however format. To learn whether, you know, we have enough near the park, whether we have enough downtown, whether we have enough, uh, the.
So maybe is it that some of these questions work with just agree, disagree, because then. The, the staff or the various committees can work on it, like, do you wanna see more art downtown, to me is different than. You know, do we have enough accessible parking, or is there an area that? Is difficult to cross? So are there questions in this that can be? In this general format, and are there questions that we say, oh, we want to know more specifics? That then we can go with that format? But I would like to know if. People think there is enough art downtown, or restaurants, or shops. But those, to me, are like general, like we disagree, and then the other ones are more like.
So, so, alright, so let's work on that then. So, are the art question relieved in this format, can we say that's true?
Potentially, I think to be consistent, so every other question, we set the bar at like sufficient number. So, thoughts on saying I believe that there is like enough, or there is a sufficient number of public art installations downtown, just to be consistent with. Because that's the one where your agree, disagree is with an action of wanting more versus agree, disagree with the status quo.
Right, I thought you liked it very, but.
Uh. Not necessarily.
Okay.
I mean.
I didn't hear that, sorry.
No, just if you're trying to figure out if people are straight lining, which I think if we're moving away from our grid, you don't have to worry about that.
Well, I know, but this, I guess what I figured, what I, what I heard is we're gonna take topics like bicycle racks out of this.
Yeah.
And mobility out of this, and cross the street out of this, and parking spaces out of this. So now you're down to, and, and you don't like the vibrant question, but I mean, now you're down to, there's only five of these here, it's probably fine.
Right.
It's, it's not like, it's, it's not like it's that, you know what I mean?
I'm just saying, maybe it sends a different message to residents too. If you have one that's there should be more, and the other ones are what we have is enough. Is that something?
I'm okay with wording it. If you wanna say, do we have enough, I'm okay with that question too.
I believe that there's, I would do something. I wouldn't get fainty, I would just use the same words we use o- other places, so I would do something with sufficient number somehow. So it's. Parallel, semantically parallel.
Yeah, it could be that.
Okay, so, so let me, let me just, I wanna stand our question for one second, one second. Are we really concerned about it downtown, or do we, are we asking? There should be more art generally in the city?
I think all of these should be across the city, including art.
So if you started, uh. At Bush's, come this way.
Well, that's where I'm going, because, you know, downtown, nobody, nobody considers lots of day show delay downtown with our content. And people, and people like John, he's done, you know, it's, it's, it's a neat corner for him, it was planned, it's a planned approval for public art, right?
Right. But he still had the five thousand dollars. We have it or they have?
We, we have it.
That's what, I, what, that's what I proposed. If that's said, I believe for her, we have enough art, enough public art. Throughout the city. That changes it into like a yes or no question, right? Or, or I guess we'd say we.
Right, that's something different too, like agree, disagree, I would normally do more like an opinion question, and I mean, I guess these are kind of opinions, but it's basically a question about somebody's experience or perception, which then maybe lends itself more to a yes, no. Than agree, disagree. I don't know, I'd be fine going yes, no. I, I, nine through twelve, I went yes, no, on my.
It, it, so, so to try to keep this high level, if, if, um. If, if you like, what's, if you look at the concepts that are there, then, then we'll remove parking spaces, crossing the street, accessibility. Um, and bicycle racks.
That's what I'm trying to get to, let, let's, let's.
We can, we can, we can, we can rework those.
Yeah, yeah, into, into the forms that are closer to what, yeah, okay, so. I think that, I think that works for everybody, right? So, I believe in a few of these in this format, we'll get more specific on the bicycle racks, the parking spaces. The cleanliness, the mobility, crossing the street.
And we'll, we'll, we'll bring it up to a, to a citywide model. And change it to sufficient.
Good question, okay.
And in terms of the intro to the grid, where, where we do have those, do you agree, disagree with the following statements, or however it comes across, I think it could be helpful to. Include something. That cues the respondent to what the content is, so it, it would be something like, you know, say these words about the town, the downtown, it would be, do you agree or disagree with the following statements about that?
Right, I.
So something like that, just so when they, you like know what that chunk of questions is about.
Sure. Also really quick, Charlotte, Allison, it's also.
Okay. Great, welcome Allison.
Do people want the fun place to visit and walk around question? I think I dropped it from my version.
I'm okay with it. It's, it's, it's a touch of fuel, but.
Like leaving it.
I don't hear anything. Okay, so questions three and four. How do you find out information about news and ongoing activities in the city of Dexter?
I'm like, I have a question about Dexter's Barbie, and I don't think they are in print at the moment. Are they online? Yeah, I think they don't do Dexter anymore, and they're part of Chelsea.
I think it's within the Chelsea Guardian?
I, 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 I don't think we, we received a copy in the office in a while.
I think December was their last. And people could add it if they felt like it is really good information.
Okay, everybody okay with three and four? I mean, that's just a, that's just, we're just big in interest, I don't know what we're gonna do with that necessarily, but.
Right. So, yeah, I think in my, in my survey, I proposed, I think, pushing, well, three came earlier, and four, um. Those other ones came later in terms of question order, just because I was trying to get all of the service-related questions up to the front, so let me.
Let's, let's just go through the questions, and then worry about all of it. Is that fair?
That's right.
Because, I think.
A lot to hold in.
Yeah, we try to organize all at the same time.
Okay.
Justin could do that. Okay, five is a whole sheet of paper from page seven. Pick five of the following potential priorities for the city of Dexter. Government that you believe to be the most important?
So, reason we're not giving them another option on that.
Very bad, Mr. White.
Just in case. I mean, who knows? We, you know, we might get four people saying something that we hadn't thought about, and. That we might wanna think about it.
Who has the question in this week? There's an awful lot of topics that cross multiple categories, and I know we don't wanna add more stuff. It's weird how for somebody to. Prioritize all this this way. If you break it into the categories, I think you're going to find, the responses are going to be more. Beneficial and ultimately not potentially more. Active, actionable.
So they're, 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 they're not prioritizing this list, they're just picking classes?
Correct, but that's a wrong list to try and prioritize. And I'm not a survey expert by any measure, but I do know that when Northville did theirs, when they were recently asked to plan update. Part of the difficulty that the planning commission encountered. Was that they put a list of everything out there. And it was extremely difficult for people to, to, um. Take a answer, and then.
So, so, so to your point, I didn't get into this, but I wasn't gonna read all of this, but, you know, we, we say I'm here providing more public art. Which is exactly the same question as to number one, okay, so we should just ask it one place.
Yes.
I would take it off of here, if we're gonna ask the art question over there. Does that make sense, everybody? You already focused it on, right, it's more than here, okay? You know, the first box says improving the appearance of downtown, is that the same, is that aimed at cleanliness? And when you read that, was that what you think of, or what, what do you, what do you think of when you say from the appearance of?
Right.
Or what did you, when you wrote that? What, what was your, what was your hope that we were gonna?
I mean, it, it, it could be a variety of things, right, it could be. Making, you know, forcing most to maintain the facade of their buildings.
Okay, I would rather see a specific question than related to that, if that's, if, assuming that's something council wants to know.
Yeah.
Again, I want this focus, I think this needs to be focused back on what we're trying to.
Yes.
Learn about.
So if you think of the prioritization that you're asking for as a, a visual form chart, you've asked, um. An art question, you think we need more art in the city. But when you put that question in a priority, um.
I'm not even sure if you have this question.
But, but what it does is when that question goes with other things that are art-related for the city. They prioritize it, that gives you an understanding of where that falls within. This is, yeah, this is important, or this isn't, related to other similar things, that helps you in the end, figure out how to budget and plan and implement it.
So you're saying break this question into like three different questions? Essentially, like categories.
Yes, board.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty different, just.
Well, I was going up, so just.
Yeah, you know.
I, I think, yeah, I, I, I. I think it needs to be pulled apart, is where I was going with it, and I think there's redundancy in this, that's covered elsewhere in the survey. I wouldn't ask this question, I guess, is what I was saying.
I voted for scrapping it, um, because there was a lot of redundancy, I didn't think it was clear actionable feedback. I also agree, oh, I mean, this is functionally a reigning task, because you have to pick five. If you, if you go through, I mean, about, I don't know, fourth of the way down, we have ensuring the provision of clean drinking water, ensuring the effective treatment of wastewater, managing the flow of stormwater. Would we stop doing that if people didn't pick? It's not.
That's my point. Are we learning anything there yet?
Right.
I don't think we're learning. That's not, that's my point.
Yeah. So I personally would rather, and I mean, I appreciate the point about ranking. I think that does help with prioritization. But I think for something at this level, I think we pick the topics that are, you know, specific. And I think you could switch to a rating scale. So for example, it says, uh, the last one, giving preference to businesses located in the city of Dexter when awarding, awarding municipal contracts. If that's on the table, that's something I think it seems like we've done. Um, if it's on the table, whether or not we keep doing that, I think you have a specific question that says, how important is it that the city of Dexter gives preference to businesses located in the city of Dexter when awarding municipal contracts? Very important, somewhat important, not at all important. So I'm in favor of picking, I mean, I do the same thing.
Let's just stay on that topic. Don't we have a policy on that?
I, I, I believe it's a little bit in our first, first policy.
I don't think you can ask the question.
So then we don't.
Is everybody even aware that it's incorporated in the purchasing policy?
I know I've seen it somewhere. I didn't know what level of.
Oh, that's not, we don't get off the pole and policies out. We have things like that, but if, if, if we as a board are wondering about that, I would say we should be reviewing the purchasing policy to see if we've covered that. Because, you know, we all have this so big, there's, there's certain things you can't get from municipal services here.
Right.
I mean, you can't give a preference here.
What do we think of having?
We don't have a lot. We don't have everything.
Sorry, what do you, what do, what do we think of having sort of like a just open question or a comment box that what do you think should be the priorities of the city of Dexter government in your opinion? Just have an open.
That's, that's, I love that question much better than all of those.
I think you can do that. I think one, uh, thing to consider is the extent to which people are aware of all the things that we're considering. And so I think, um, if you said, and I think I had a question.
Well, I think there is a lot of redundancy. So we are having a lot of this covered in other areas. So I'm, I'm thinking that after all of the questions that are asked that we can gauge opinion, then sort of at, towards the end of the survey, having.
I don't mind that. Something for, I, I, well, what's, what's interesting about it upfront is you're not leading them.
Yes. You're not free, you know.
Well, well, I mean, I mean, if, if they, if they read all these things later.
Yeah. So the other part is also that when they look at this list, that's the only list they see. What if there are other things that was said that people have in mind or?
I like your, I like your open ended question much better to say, what should the priorities for Dexter City Government be or something like that? And, and, and don't, you know, let them write in what comes to mind before, then, then you take them down the path of questions.
Yeah. And then, yeah, I think you put that early on in the questionnaire.
Put it, put it early on, right? Because then, because then if they're right across the street, they're gonna write it right down.
Do you want to put, I have that open ended question. Do we want to put anything like your top five, your top three? So that we don't get like, you know, paragraph upon paragraph and it's more focused.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's fine. That's good. That's fine. I'm good with that.
So one way, and I'll have to ask you, Sean, for what page I'm in the packet, it's question five, um, on my revision. So I kind of, I incorporated.
Page thirty, page thirty-five on top of thirty-six.
Thanks. I incorporated some things from this long question five, but I also pulled questions, the part question fifteen from, Justin's version of the survey where it was about, here are the parks products that are discussed. Can you rank them in order, priority? I'm framing this more in terms of like a capital improvements plan type question. So I said, every spring following review by the planning commission, city council adopts a capital improvements plan that evaluates, prioritizes and structures the financing of public improvement projects across a variety of categories, including parks and recreation. A lot of that text is taken from the capital improvements plan. How much of a priority, if at all, are you to the following potential park and recreation projects? So I, it was clear to me, projects to pull for park and rec, but you could have either a general question that has a variety of categories. So there was something related to public works. So that was a capital improvements plan that we want to public incident on. But for now, I limited it to parks and rec, but you could have a different question for a different category of capital improvements plans. So I wrote constructing permanent public restrooms in Melk Creek Park North, Monument Park or somewhere else, given estimated cost. It's something that keeps coming up on parks and rec. I think it's something, you know, it was asked here, we would need to decide, are we ready to be soliciting public input about that? But if we were, I think this would be a good format to do it. So you would have the restrooms. Adding an accessibility railing or ramp to the Monument Park visual estimated cost, whatever. That's come up on the parks and rec board. And I think it was mentioned in Justin's version of the survey. Constructing the Dexter Chelsea Road Trail Connector, describing that estimated cost blank. Constructing Melk Creek Park Trail Phase Three. Those to me, when I looked at our park master plan and the capital improvements plan stuck out to me as more immediate upcoming capital improvements plans that it could be helpful to have the public prioritization of. If, because there are some people in parks and rec, for example, who do very strongly about restrooms and when are we going to do restrooms and when is this happening? Other people may be, are the trail people and they want that. Um, so I think more meaningful than like this current like long thing, which it seems like people are less inclined to proceed with, would be a specific rate these, this category of capital improvements plans that we think are coming up in the next one to five years and we could use that to.
Okay. So, so, so you jumped ahead to fifteen.
Because I pulled some things from this grid. And so I just wanted to say an example of how we could ask more specific feedback that is in this ranking format.
Okay. So, so I think we're, are we all, let me say, are we all in agreement that we're gonna have an open ended question up to upfront and want to suggest to? Have it say the top three or top five, however, I would that, you know, enough space that they can do that without writing the novel. Okay. So let's, let's, let's come back to that.
But just the market that we would come back to some capital improvements.
And that's on page seven to talk about, right?
I'm, that'd be a page seven. Okay. That's it. Open, open, open end question.
Because some of these questions, I think we could answer ourselves at the time. I know we're broad.
Well, that's, right. I think we, I think, I don't think we need to ask all of these. And I think what Jamie's getting is there's just specifics and she used the park one. Let's, let's, let's talk about the ranking if, if, I like what you said.
That's fine.
I like what you said. Um, so five, five is gonna be open ended or some, somewhere upfront like that. Okay. Now, the next, the next four, the next two pages, eight and nine are questions related to council. Okay. And I'm just reading them for, you know, have you attended a public city meeting in the last 12 months? Yes or no? How important is it that city boards and committees, including city council, continue to offer an option for virtual pub, public participation? In the last 12 months, have you had interaction with any member of city council or council hall?
When you ask the question six about you attended a public meeting, does it include physically or virtual? Because you have a lot more people. Okay, that's.
Well, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm gonna ask the general there all over, you start a question. What are we, what are we getting out of this? Uh, to, to me, the most important question is, should we continue to offer a virtual meeting option? I mean, you're doing, I mean, what are we learning about, what are we learning about the interaction with the city council, city council?
I don't think a lot because this town is, the city is small enough that I feel like.
I don't think we're learning anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I mean, let's, let's, let's say that, let's say that item ten came back and you got a poor under courtesy. Now we have to figure out who's, who is not courteous. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we need, I don't think we need these five questions. I, I like the one about virtual participation. And I, but I think the answer is obvious. I think we're gonna keep doing this forever.
Well, right, which is why I would probably vote for removing it.
Well, so I'm not.
That I would stop.
I'm sure the survey could rid of all five of these if it was my. I don't know. Does anybody, I, what, what are we gaining from, or did you have an attention?
Yeah.
Does everybody agree? I mean, especially I need to say, I mean.
The only thing that I could see that we could get out of some form of question about virtual participation is making more people aware there is the option for virtual participation.
So, so you could, so do you want to say, are you aware that, I mean, how do people live on this world and not know that there's?
I, I want you to say something more, just like what are challenges to participation in general? So do you say something like, what, if anything, keeps you from attending public city meetings, either in person or virtually? Arts and something about like, you know, because then you can hear from people who are like, I love to attend, but playing or I don't have computer, which if they're doing an online survey, but you know, like, would that give us more information? Like, I don't know.
So let's, let's, let's ask them off of the virtual question instead of. That, that will hear that.
That's okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I agree that it, it should, the, the information we get is about needing and accessibility of meeting is more important. The rest of it is we don't get really anything out. And I have Donna's voice in my head that if somebody doesn't like, you know, the number ten, well, then they won't, won't work for us.
Well, I mean, over the, however many years I've been involved, and I've heard many people say, geez, I ran into Donna Fisher. She was so helpful. She was so enthusiastic about the play air mentor. Paul Cousin was so helpful with his explanation of the, you know, multi water shed. I don't think, I don't think this, the virtual thing maybe.
Yeah.
All right. So Justin, you got that? Okay. The next set of questions, eleven and twelve. Okay. Relate to interacting with our staff. Now it's an oversight board. By instruction and then implementation is done at staff level. I can understand if you want to go down this direction. Is this an area, an area we're interested in? Or do we, or, you know, I'm gonna read the questions. In the last 12 months, have you had any interaction with a member of city staff? I would guess most people that. I don't, I don't.
My only suggestion.
I think we'll pay the work.
Well, I, I guess, I mean, let's, so let's say that, let's say that you get, uh, half the people say yes, half the people say no.
Okay. Can I ask?
We're not, I mean, we're getting it, but I know the numbers are, or, or we are.
I guess that my question with these is, yes, as an oversight board, if, you know, this could be helpful information for us to have. The way that this is laid out, it's like, if they say like, you know, yeah, we asked a question and the courtesy was terrible and the timely response was terrible, like, we don't know who that is that they got that service from, if they got that service from anyone, not plowing what they do. But like, you know, what's the point if we don't, what's really, I, I don't know. I don't know if. I am also kind of uncomfortable with taking questions out about us and then pointing the finger at staff.
Well, I don't, I personally don't think we need these either unless the board is concerned about the information we might get from here. That's what I'm saying. Is that a priority for this board? Because if it's not, I don't think it should be in the survey. Again, it's supposed to be, we're supposed to be finding, asking questions that we want to focus on as part of our goals and objectives.
And, and, and I would, I would also be concerned about going any deeper with these questions, trying, trying to call out individual members.
Right. I would get rid of eleven, twelve, thirteen.
So the reason I think they're relevant is as a board, we appoint a city manager who is responsible for managing the administrative operations of the city. And part of that is like hiring and managing staff. If there are concerns with staff, um, suppose hypothetically, they're not being adequately handled at that level. Where, what is the avenue for residents to share that concern? Who do they go to? Who would they go to? They would go to the board, right?
The board is just, and then call the office.
But I'm saying, if, if there's a concern with how the office is handling things and, and the office doesn't handle that.
Then they come to us.
Then they come to us. Okay?
Yep.
We're going to them on the survey. I mean, I think it's fair to ask that question. That's information that helps us. We will be evaluating Justin's performance as city manager in April.
But again.
This is useful information.
The way that this is worded, how do we know who they're talking about? So it's useless.
Well, in my version, I've asked since January first, twenty twenty-one, how many times?
Hold on, hold on, slow down.
That's question twenty-four.
Okay. So let me get these files. I love you.
Thanks.
I gotta make sure we're on the same page, okay?
I don't want to do this anymore. My data.
I know, and I know you're wrong. Just to follow the basis. Okay. So we're on page thirty-eight of the packet, twenty-four. Okay, there it is.
So I have a question about how many times, if at all, have you interacted with city staff? You, we could get rid of the how many times. Maybe we don't need to know how many times. I thought it would be interesting to know, you know, zero, one or more. Part of the justification for this building was, well, you know, versus having something smaller and people working remotely was, well, we provide an important service to the community and we need to have this physical presence here in the community. I would be interested to know how many people are physically, how many people are interacting with staff, um.
Okay. So.
You know, so I think we could do zero, one or more.
So I, I agree twenty-four. I might change the wording a little bit, but I, I agree. Twenty-four provides you more information. You're, you're trying to find out how many times do people have interaction, right? So.
Right. In their physical capacity.
So if a hundred people take the survey, you know, you're gonna learn whether a certain percentage don't interact, a certain percentage, one, just one to two, right? You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna get some level of how.
Right.
For per, per population.
Right.
You know, what level is interacting, right? Okay. I agree that, that I could get around a question like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, that, that really provides you something. I don't, I don't know how we do with it, but it does, it does provide fringe.
I guess I just personally don't even, I don't see how these give us any more. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think twenty-five is very similar to what it is. So I don't know how that gives more specifics.
Yeah, exactly.
So twenty-five, great. There's a, the concern of twenty-five.
Twenty-four? Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Let's talk about one question.
I guess I'm just talking about this generally and I'm, I'm. I don't know. I, 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 I'm feeling right now like these questions, I mean, did I just hear, is this a justification for saying why we don't need this building? Are we trying to do that? Is that what we're doing with these questions?
No, what we're doing with these questions is letting residents know, we want to hear any concerns they have so that we can properly oversee the operations of the city in the way that we were elected to do.
Okay. Here's the other thing that we've talked about is a survey is not the only method to gather information and to communicate with the public. So that is not, you know, this is, would not help me. I've talked to people, you know, I, I talk to the community. I ask them these questions directly and I take their feedback directly.
Do you see any benefit to obtaining anonymous input? Do you see any reason why anybody in the community?
Okay, I hear you. Yes, yes, I do.
Would have concerns? Okay. That's the value I see in this.
So, um, Dan had his hand up. So I want to try.
You're, you guys are.
I got it.
You're covering, you're covering what I was thinking.
We ran into someone this couple of years ago, a TV show, and it was about a resident, it was about a resident that had a high usage. And this resident was wrong. I mean, it wasn't that they were wrong.
The water, the water is hot. I remember this. Yeah.
So in my experience over time, I've been doing this and it's really been two other different communities too. The residents or citizens, it's not that they're on the right. They're gonna go to the extreme to get the answer they want. So whether it's us telling them something and they're satisfied, or us telling them something, they're not satisfied, they go to Justin. If he doesn't satisfy that question, they're gonna go to you guys.
Yeah.
So I, I'm not trying to discard your question, what you're saying, your survey. I just think that, uh, citizens are gonna do what they gotta do. And if they like the answer from me, like the answer from Dan, they go with it. If they like the answer from Justin.
So to provide, to provide context to a little bit on this, Jacob, and I can help me, Tim, if I pick it on the wrong one, because there are a couple of people that, somebody questioned the water bill. They said, geez, water, I never use this much water. And this comes up every so often. So when they, they don't, they don't call me about the water bill. They call the office about the water bill. These guys jump in and say, well, hey, maybe there's something going on here. Maybe you have a, if you have a trip. They're even good enough to tell me if I'm going the wrong direction. They'll go in the house, the resident permits them. They'll look around. They've noticed leaky faucets, running toilets, all sorts of stuff that contribute to the high water bill. And this, what's that? And, and, and the case I'm remembering, um, this guy had, had power washed his house. Okay. But in, in the course of talking to them, he, he said it and, and then he didn't. Okay, but in the course of talking to them, he he said it, and and then he didn't realize that. Right, is that the one you're thinking of?
Is what he said.
Is what he said, okay. And and you know, that was the explanation, but they figured it out through their interaction, but the person had. Wasn't, initially wasn't happy with the, the answer. You know, and then it floats up a little bit, so to speak.
And this happens.
And I, and I, I'm like, you guys, you know, I'm supposed to break back down to that because. You know, I'm not, I'm not texting a lot of beer or whatever, but they, but it came out through their conversation, they got it.
But you, but you have to have an understanding of the whole story, you had the, you know, the, all of the documents and everything. As a responsible council member, if somebody comes to you, you know, you're gonna want all that information to say. Yeah, you know, but we have these interactions all the time, and I don't wanna say no to anybody. But that right there could give me a low score, just because I'm trying to do what's right for the city, not an individual person.
One of the other things too is quite often, you get people that don't like the answer. I had someone calling yesterday, and she, she's very upset because she said she didn't get her tax bill, and so therefore she should not be paying the penalties. For late payment, even though she paid late last year. And. My answer was, I'm sorry ma'am, as state law that you're responsible for the bill, whether or not to get it in the mail, and I cannot wait to sound. She could very well answer, you know, horrible things about me, because she didn't like the answer to the question.
And and the thing is, I guess, for me, with the superintendent, if you. And I guess, Justin, I'm speaking for you, if you know we got a problem, we need to talk about it. I mean, this is where the buck stops, is with you, right? And and you know, to 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 that point, I mean, if 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 we have a problem with individual work or staff. We don't wait until an annual review to address it, we address it immediately.
And the other thing too for me is like, I've had, I've had citizens come up to me frustrated about certain things. And then I've explained why you've done something, or why you've done something the way that you've done it, and they're, but then they're like, okay, yeah, that makes more sense. And so, some of it is just lack of, of general knowledge and education on how the city works.
And I do that, when I go into service calls and stuff, like checking on whatever, it was like going through inspections and stuff. I I inform them as, as much as I possibly can about the situation that they're going through, and then that way. They're a little bit more at ease to understand why something. You know, whether it's leaky toilet, whether it's. Someone might stick it on a wire socket or something like that. You know, but when I tell them to answer it, I mean, we're out of our cell phones.
Well, I I I, I feel like our customer service is very high. I did, maybe you said, or Michelle, that table. Somebody may not always like the answer. But our customer service, I think, is pretty high generally, okay? If if, um, again, going back to what we're gonna learn. I don't have any problem asking the direct question of how many times have we interacted? Trying to get on a, on a per again, if we get, you know, three hundred responses and people say they've interacted, then you're getting an idea that. One out of every third, you're interacting, okay, remember that, if that's, if that's helpful, okay, I don't find that question, at least to provide something. I don't, I I, I I guess, to your point about the anonymous thing. If somebody has a question, a concern about the professionalism of one of our staff members. And it's really important to them. Wouldn't you think that they would wanna reach out to one of us?
If it has a bothering, then they would have, well, heard us by now.
Because here's another thing.
If they feel like they have an ally on council, if they know how to navigate that.
Well.
What do you, anybody?
I don't want that to be, we're all, we're all, we're all working towards the same thing.
I understand, I mean, if they feel comfortable going to somebody at council, look, I'm not trying to pit us against each other, I'm not trying to put council against staff. I am somebody who values quantities and quantities of information, and then after that, I evaluate the quality of it. And I figure out, how can I use this, is this relevant, that sort of a thing. We are here talking about gathering information. I've indicated a preference for gathering certain information, I hear your concerns about it, just because we've gathered it, doesn't mean we take a specific action on it. Or we treat it as all equally valid. Uh, I'm fine getting rid of these, I will happily go up to the public. In all the ways I have been doing, I will continue to do it to get their feedback. If council as a body doesn't want this type of question on the survey. I'm fine at having on the survey. So. I'm not trying to make enemies, okay?
So, another of the things is that the, the city staff are service providers. Service providers, if they're doing a fantastic job, they're invisible, unfortunately, right? If everything goes fine in a city or in a service provider, I have a two hundred fifty to on our provider service. So, for me. If my service is going very well, which is similar to any service that in the city is going very well. Nobody notices it, everything is working fine. They don't even know how many people are in the staff, they don't know who is doing what, they don't know if it's, you know, it's. It's unfortunate side of that, that service providers, and everything is going right, they're invisible. So if there are issues, is when people come mostly to interact with the staff. Rather than paying the bill, the rest of it is one day, there are issues. And when there are issues, there are already tension, there's already tension and there are already people that. Have opinions, they're upset because there is a circumstances happening. Half of the time, that might not even be anything in the city, like before, you went to DTE about their power and they're. They called the city and they're upset, they might not like the answer. So, it's, it's that balance of understanding these questions. What, what do they provide, right? And if, yes, if there are people who are upset about. Unfortunately, a city staff member, it's not about having allies on the council, they could send an email to the entire council. To say, hey, this person did X. And generally, if people are that upset, they're not gonna wait for a survey. They're not wait five years or, oh, I'm gonna wait for the survey to come out, or for the annual review or anything like that, we will hear about them. So to me, there's these set of questions. Don't provide us with anything specific or anything actionable we can do. Because they might be upset that, somebody can answer this question, thinking about the DTE, the I. And saying that it's not, they're not professional. So what do we do with, with that, not knowing that information? Do we assume that our city staff are unprofessional because somebody else did?
Does anybody want an open ended comment that just says? Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns about? It it could even be more general, and maybe it goes in the open end at the end. Please share any additional questions, comments, or concerns you have about. I mean, I think you can include, like, interactive city staff, city council.
Well, you're leading, you're leading, you're leading though.
No, you're framing.
Okay, okay.
Leading, leading would be, tell me about always you're frustrated with city staff, that would be leading. A question, comment, or concern could be, when are you gonna give them a raise? Or when are you hiring more people to help them? When are you, you know, comment could be, they're monthly.
Well, you could ask, you could say at the end, at the end, is there anything else we should know?
That's fine, I mean, I.
Well, and if the, well, and if the salary of the employees was on the top of somebody's mind.
Right.
Then they could put it in that box, right? Without, without telling them about. X wires need, right?
Yeah, either very general, please share any additional questions, comments, or concerns below, is my last question, I'm imagining there's something like that here, I don't know.
Alright, so I'm okay with, I'm okay with an, an ending question like that, you know. There's something we haven't touched on in a long time, and I would wanna say that. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm hearing we're getting rid of eleven, twelve, thirteen.
And it really, I do want staff to know, it's, I'm not trying to be adversarial, please know that.
Jamie, I don't think you want our, I just wanted to hammer a little action to this and what we do with her, maybe, I don't take any of this, you know, any of that. Again, it's very, it's very exercise.
Dan, you got, you probably remember this, Tim, I'm not sure if you were with us or not, but. Roger Kovak. Okay, Ro- Roger Suda's. Sue's media actress, named me at the. He's a lawyer, what's his job? What's that? He's a lawyer, that's. Well, I ran into him, uh, this past weekend in the grocery store over by the apples. He turned to me, he says, apples are five dollars. And I looked, I, hi Roger, how are you? He said, don't you think this is ridiculous? And I said, well, the prices of groceries, everything, it's gone up. And that interaction led to, he really thinks our street improvement projects have been well run over the past five years. Was his ending comment. It started with apples, now. He was upset about something, and he took it to the ultimate extreme to get our. Our attention on it, we, we corrected it, we missed our fourth street project.
We need to ask him in the moment, time, before the action was taken, before, with it.
I don't know.
I just want you guys to know, we deal with this every day, and we do really go out of our way to spend a ton of time trying to make everybody happy, but. We got a job to do, we work for the city, we help work on the individual.
I didn't even know there was a water problem. Okay, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, there's a, there's a, a thing, you know, where your name did the thing, you're like. Tell us about your street, you know, of course, Paul knew, because he lived on the street, you ever seen these guys? Yeah, right, right. Alright, so now, alright, let's move, steer back, sorry, I gotta tell a story, so now back to your, you were wanting to talk about the part question as well, it's capital improvements. We are, we are, we are at.
So fourteen.
Fourteen is, is a general use question. Does anybody have a problem with the frequency question? I personally think it's a fine question.
I thought we could get rid of it, because we, we asked it in the Parks and Rec, in the recent Parks and Rec survey, and I wasn't sure if it was, I mean, it's fine to have there. Uh, I guess we'd have to think about what comes next, if it helps us better understand what comes next.
Okay, so, alright, so. Let's, let's move on to fifteen.
So.
So, so fifteen was the question that you talked about, if I was hearing right, you like the idea of ranking capital improvement projects?
Yes.
Okay, you want to know of, of various, of some various lists, you don't have to get into specifics of what they are unless somebody sees something that's missing. You want, you would like people to. Rank them, is that what I understood?
Well, so we have, well, we have two types of rank questions, one we got rid of, I think it was nine maybe, and now there's this fifteen, and. There were some things that. Were at, like, restrooms was asked in both of them, I think, so restrooms was on fifteen, it was also asked earlier. I also.
Five was a priority.
Or five, five was a priority, okay, top, pick your top five. So I was just thinking to help with respondent burden and to help with our action, to potentially limit the list to like the next most immediate things that we think we're, we're considering. And you could potentially do that, or within parks, you could do it, I tried to look through the capital improvements plan. Parks was the easiest way to sort of map on plans for capital improvements to a question like this, but there could be others. Anyways, and so, and even with that, I had put it, phrased it, I guess here I phrased it as a rating question. Where it was, you could respond, this is a high priority, medium priority, low priority, not a priority at all. And I had limited it to a, a few options, so.
Alright, so, so, one, one suggestion you had in yours versus what. Justin has, is that yours, you, you wanted a cost. A cost, approximate cost range, is what you had hinted in your question, would be additional information if it's on the survey.
Right, to the extent we have it and we think it's accurate.
Okay, fair, fair enough, okay, fair enough.
Is there, is there any concern about, um. Like, what cost bias?
Yes.
Yes.
I also think that because, you know, the city's budget is so complicated, I think throwing out costs without, to people who don't study it. Like, staff, council does, I think that that's a little bit, it could definitely lead to that.
I would be fine taking that.
Okay, well, I just wanted to note that, that was interesting when I read it, I noticed that. The rest of council thought that was important, then we should include it, if not, if it was okay, then, okay, so let's, so now the question becomes relative to parks. There's a list of projects, right, and, and. This, I think, is very relative to our goal objectives, we're trying to, from this set of questions, learn which of the projects. Take the priority, right? Okay, so does. Does question fifteen on page thirteen of the packet. Do that, does that get us the information we want? Or as Jamie's proposed. Would you want to have these listed in a more grid, I'm assuming.
Right.
Grid format, if that's the right phrase. Individually with a high priority, medium priority, low priority, not priority at all.
James, the way that Jamie has this one laid out.
In the grid fashion?
Yeah.
Okay, I could, I'm good with that too.
Do people like the ones I picked out of there, so like, for example, I don't have refrigerated ice cream on there, I didn't talk about the public health splash pad or community pool, the Hyatt launch.
Are, if we switch to a grid and we leave all these in there, are you okay with, with it being in? I mean, I mean, maybe not everybody's concerned about all of these, but if some of us sort of are, at least, you know, you can ignore the ones you want and.
Yeah, so then you would get, you would just get rid of maintain, I think you would just get rid of maintain what we have. Because I think presumably somebody would just say, not at all a priority for everything that can be.
I think, I think it's, I think it's our own priority that we're gonna make it how we have, so, right, agree with that?
Oh, right, yeah.
It's our own priority, I think it should be our own priority to make it what we have, so I don't know, I would, I would give her that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 all of these would have been, you know, discussed at, at one point or another, either by council or the Parks and Rec Commission. Which is why I included these specific ones. Some are and some are not in the, in the CIP.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as, as a good agreement on that, I think for your suggestion on the grid. Okay, so then, um. I think that sixteen goes away, is that true?
Yeah, I think sixteen is something we've done with fifteen, for example, it mentions public restrooms, it mentions the ping pong, I think. I also didn't know if it was kind of premature, um, or.
I was, I was thinking you could, you could, you could X sixteen, but leave seventeen.
Yeah.
You do, you do the grid on the things that are on page thirteen, and then you say, is there anything else we'd like to share about the city parks this month? You can say parks are trails if you want.
Right.
I mean, that's open enough, there's, there's something they're thinking of, like, like, let's say they say, well, we need a bike rack in the park, put a bike rack there.
So I had added, so this is my question three.
Question three, hold on, because that's page thirty five.
Uh, yeah, so, because I think part of what sixteen was trying to get at was the current and ongoing discussion about potential improvements to Mill Creek Park North. I wondered if people would be interested in knowing something about how that park is currently being used, and if that would help that discussion as it moves. Moves forward, so I have a question that says, the city is currently discussing potential improvements to Mill Creek Park North, behind the current fire station at Low Farmers Market. How, if at all, do you or members of your household currently use the park, select all that apply. Playing on the existing play structures, swings or climbing rock, playing or spending time in the open grassy areas, playing in Mill Creek, launching canoe or kayaks in Mill Creek, something else, or I, we do not use the park. Um, and then if you would like the city to consider specific potential improvements in its discussions, please describe them below. Those were specifically meant to help with this parks, specific parks discussion, I don't know, Justin feels if they would be useful. Anybody on city council thinks they would be useful?
So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with your question three. If, if we want to have a more specific thing there, I will, the context of that for me is that. On the fifteenth of this month, we had a multi-board meeting. Which I know I was supposed to attend and couldn't attend at the last minute. We haven't even had a dialogue on what came out of that meeting. It's in our process and helped eleven days ago, I don't even know where that sits anymore, I'll talk to you, what, what was discussed there.
Yeah.
So I'm, I would. I'm okay with this question, as it reads, just based on a general knowledge, I would, don't think I'd wanna know anything for. Today on a question, till I understand what happened at that meeting, what, if there was a proposal, next steps, or maybe it was just okay.
Yeah, it was just so information.
Alright, well, that, I'm okay with that general question.
Yeah.
As a feedback of that process, again, when I, when I, when I heard we were budgeting a hundred thousand dollars to improve. That park, I was thinking it was a playground. Specifically that area, I was not thinking it was this whole reworkup, but.
Right.
I didn't think of it as a master plan to fill a park, but that, maybe I just didn't pick it up until later. That's, that evolved to me, which is okay.
So we could get rid of four, so the four I have, I keep, I mean, some open end, I think is fine, either seventeen or.
I think seventeen is a, is a good question.
But we're, we'll replace sixteen with.
With three. With three. Everybody okay with that? Everybody okay with that?
Seventeen is, is there anything else you'd like to share about the park system?
Yeah, we'll keep that in there and add more trails of park or trails.
There is, to me, there are different questions. Jamie's question is like, "How do you use it right now?" Versus the one, I think, in Justin's is about what, what do you see as positive things about it? So to me, is like, how do you use it right now is depends on the limitations of it right now. That doesn't tell me that if we have other things, that people would like to use those. I mean, like, what do we get from the question that, "How do you use it right now?"
Yeah, so sixteen was intended to be kind of an extension of the public meeting for public committees together.
Well, here's how, here's what I would get some. If, if very few people check that they spend time in open grassy areas, maybe the open grassy areas could be something else. Or could, or could have something there. If everybody's playing in Hill Creek, you probably need to hire a safety.
I guess that's how I saw it too, it's like, what's the, what's currently being used there? Presumably if it's used as value, and it's some part of it that we should preserve or...
Right, preserve the current.
Or something in how we're revising it. The reason I felt less strongly about the wording in sixteen is because I felt like there were specific recommendations that it seemed like, it seemed like we were trying to get away from specific recommendations in the way we were gathering public input. So, because we were trying to make it broader than just, "What sort of playground equipment do you want? Or do you want to slide on this hill?" Because that's not really how we posed it to the other, at that big board meeting. It was more, it was more of an open thing. So that's why I guess my follow-up was just a more open thing to be more in line with that, but...
Well, I think, I think before, for updating, I think the goal is to start to little round options at the next parks meeting and have, and start that discussion in Smith Group. Somebody you can start working towards, the design.
And that would be fine, I mean, ideally, the timing of that, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything if we wait to get the public input. I think they would be happening close enough that we could, I would rather wait for public input than to, but, you know, just try to stay in the schedule with the parks then.
Okay, well, for now, to keep this moving, we're gonna convert fifteen to a grid. Getting rid of the maintenance inherent at the bottom. Swap sixteen with three, keep the open-ended question for seventeen. Go to the next grouping of, of, if that's okay. Okay, so the next grouping is road sidewalks parking. So this is the section of the survey that we should bring in those questions that were similar, that were on page thirty-six of Jamie's, related to... Yeah, whatever the number associated with it, yes. Yes, which would be expanded if we separate the cases out. Okay, so when I, when I read number eighteen, so is this, is this something where we are, is this a priority? Are we questioning the diagonal parking spaces? As part of our goals and objectives and what we're doing? But this would be a yes or no, a yes or no answer?
I don't know, I don't know what, I didn't know any changes were being considered here. So my question back was, what if any of these things are on the table? And to limit what we're asking to be those things that are on the table? So, to be honest, there...
So, 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 sorry, I, I, I hate to call out, there, there was a request by Saman to have something about the main street parking.
Okay, I didn't remember that, okay, thank you. Alright, so you requested a question about parking. Okay, so what is it, help us then, what is it that you were trying to...
So for me, was to help people feel about the, those parking spots in terms of location and traffic and, you know, everybody has to back out of those and, and things like that. So I, my thought was, however, we can get some information on how do people see those parking spots? So, I, I like them that they're in front of the stores. They have some limitations. I just wanted to get more information about, about that. And if there is anything else we can do in those spaces and parking goes somewhere else, or people are like, "Look, we love these parking the way they are," and...
Okay, well, well, I'm okay with this topic, but it's a very, this topic can go in a lot of directions. Okay, a lot of directions, okay. My first comment is we should not, absolutely not offer ninety-degree parking. We're not gonna do ninety-degree parking there. That box would come off. I mean, you're never gonna have people go like this and back on, you have to do worse than...
Yeah, so even just, I added the topic, not...
Yeah, so, 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 when I was, trying to formulate this question, it was, what, what are the relevant possibilities out there?
Understood, let me just, let me just roll this aside. So if, if we're gonna, if we're, if we're gonna have a question about orientation, to me, there are three viable orientations for parking. The angle that we have now. You could do parallel. Like I pictured. Or you could do reverse. Do you wanna drop the whole bunch of actuaries? Where you're backing back into this space. Backing in.
I've never even seen that, where it requires that you back in.
Well, that's a, that's a...
In the professional world, there are people that say it's better to pull in and back out in a angle, and others that are, it's better to back out and pull in. At some point, there's a battle.
Those are, those are the three safest maneuvers. The ninety-degree would be a nightmare, and I don't have enough room to do anything about it. If the question is related to, "Do we need more ADA spaces?" I think we're studying that. Okay, so I, 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 I would, I would just ask the direct question, "Do we need more ADA spaces to get the sentiment?" If we're trying to get the public sentiment that we don't do or don't have enough of those, I would just ask the direct question there.
And that would be the eight that I had, that would be called that. So I call it accessible parking spaces.
Yes, that's right, and your question covers that, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Hold on one second. The other, the other, um, part of this is the, is this the longest one. Where it says, "I would be comfortable with summer, all the parking spaces were replaced with restaurant seating or shop space." What, what that, what that is, is asking is, "Would you want to convert more of the public right-of-way into more of a streetscape and have less parking on Main?" I don't know if, I know there are members of the DDA that think that's a great idea. I'm not saying all of them, but there are members of the DDA that think that's a great idea. This is being talked about in other communities much the same way. Not saying we have to do it or should do it, because I think there's challenges with all of this. Like womeners.
And womeners, yes.
So this, this was my question when I sent it to Justin, because I only send topic areas, not specifics. So I said, "Parking and handicap parking satisfaction, are they enough for elderly and kids?" And then under that was, "How do people feel about the main street diagonal parking spots?" That was the extent that I had sent. So, you know, I have generally heard of, as you said, there are various opinions. If we decide that it's not something we want to ask because, as you said, it can go so many other ways and there has been a lot of discussion about it, I'm totally fine. It was just something that came to my mind as a topic.
It's a fair question, go ahead.
I do think that there is some value in part of this question that's, "Do we need all those spaces or can we, you know, think about this streetscape idea?" Because we have talked about it here too. It's something that we've talked about, and we've done temporarily. So it would be interesting to gauge from the public whether or not they would like to see that more permanent.
Well, you're gonna get the balance of, you're gonna get the balance of responses. You know, the hardware store will say that they would rather have parking spaces, because they are a destination. They're not gonna really set up in the public spaces. I mean, although they set up the garbage cans and the sidewalk. They would rather have access to the store versus the dining establishments will like the summer option, the seasonal option, of being able to have more outdoor seating, which is very popular to those. But, you know, if we're, if we're asking questions like, "Should we have more shops in our downtown?" And then, then, there's a, there's a divide there with all of that. Michelle could teach a course on it.
Yeah, you know, yes.
Well, no, I don't, I'm, I'm just asking, I don't mind going there, but we gotta think, we really need to, if we wanna go there, we need to think about these question rates and break them up. If, if we're, if we're really focused on the parking preference. You know, this comes into, "Are people comfortable doing?" Like, you looked at, with the roof?
It's a reverse parking. No, I just have never been seen a spot that requires you back in.
And I would have it right outside the city hall.
It's required, is that it?
On that street, because on that street it's required that you back in.
It's generally used, that, or has to be.
Yeah, it's, that's why I said, like, not having...
Auburn, New York, or a vacation, my father's family grew up. They converted their entire downtown to reverse parking. It's a hot topic.
It is.
Everybody talks about it.
Because no matter...
You want to back in.
Backing in, going in, or back, I believe, the backing up part is the difficult part. So, I'm personally, as a professional...
It's, it's a, it's a habit, it's a, you're developing it in the head. And it's a habit for the people, you know, now when you're coming through Main Street, you're looking for people to back up towards, right? Well, in the other situation, when somebody stops, you don't wanna crowd them, because you're gonna end up next to them, they can't back in the space. They're, they're pulling past the space, and they come to back up. So you have to think about leaving enough room. It's a whole habit-changing thing, so.
My question for you all is, information you would need for whatever set of questions, and they're not random questions. Is this then a recommendation you're going to be making today? Because the DDA is the one that's ultimately, they're responsible for streetscape. And the DDA is going to be going through their strategic plan update, like Sean said. This is already starting to be discussed. Do you, do you think it's important enough that this information be provided now? Or as part of the DDA, when there's their strategic plan update, with a, with a more comprehensive look at improvements to streetscape in downtown?
I like that, I like that. Yep, we can take this out if we have it as part of that conversation, and I think it's more comprehensive.
I mean, I wonder if you had a question? I don't, don't really feel strongly about this, but I didn't know that I have ideas or plans or a vision for what I want that to be, although I see the value of getting public input. I don't know if there's a question that's something like, you know, with recent changes to outdoor dining or, you know, accommodating, blah, 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 that's made use of these public parking spaces. Do you have any additional questions, comments, or concerns about parking availability? Like an open-ended thing, but just to let people know that we're sort of putting the feelers out there. But I could go either way, I don't need a question on this topic at all, but I'm happy to think about Ace's question if there is one.
Okay, well, think, think about that, if there's a question like that, we want to... Okay, I just wanted to make sure we, we understand the context of, thank you for raising it, I think it needs to be divided out, and there's a lot to go into that, is all I'm getting at. You know, and, you know, if you, if you did convert to reverse, you gotta realign the curves, and curve alignment. Set up this way, it's gotta be shifted this way. There's other physical changes involved, and the drainage might need to be looked at. And there's costs associated with all this, and it seems a...
As someone who learned to drive here, I would never, I, I'm, I'm fine doing it the way it is now. I do it all the time, but I would never, I'd run back into a spot to save my life. Sorry, that's just random thoughts.
When we did the parking on Alpine, in front, or Jeffords, sorry, Jeffords, in front of one fifty. At one moment, like, a week before the thing was gonna get built, Donna Dunn said, "Maybe we should do reverse." And I remember we had a discussion about it, and it's like, you can't just ultimately change that without having a broader discussion. So it's obviously, that was, that was, there was an idea that that could be a test spot for it. But there had been no discussion prior to the idea coming out. It's like, somebody read about it, it was early on, it was, you know, ten years ago. Alright, how about, so, so eighteen's coming out then? Is that, is that... Okay, Justin?
Yep.
Alright, but, we are asking, we forget where Jamie had suggested...
Accessible parking spaces, or more parking spaces, so that would, those would come out of my...
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Alright, number nineteen, "Do you agree or disagree with the following statement? Sidewalks are well-maintained." Agree, disagree, and generally agree, but I'm okay with this question. As it's presented, I think it gives you all the options, opportunity for somebody to...
So I, I just propose that it be a straight, open end that said, "If there are specific sidewalk segments that need to be repaired or replaced, please note their location below." My only thought is, somebody could disagree and have suggestions. So, I think it's tough, like, do we, do we need, are we trying to figure out people's general perception of sidewalks? Or are we just trying to find out specific recommendations for repair? I'm fine just knowing what are the specific locations that need to be repaired. I don't need to know what their general assessment of the sidewalks is. So this question right now is trying to do both. So I'm finding the simpler question that just says, "If there are specific sidewalk segments that need to be repaired or replaced." I also added, if, this is thirteen and fourteen on mine. I said, "If there are specific segments of road that need to be repaired or replaced, please note their location below." Chances are, DPW knows about them, like Dan Howey is, fallen apart. But I also would move those to the, to the other chunk. So those are a lot, but anyways, we've talked about questions like that. So, the sidewalk question, I would have open end, where do you, that proposition? And then I would also add a...
Okay, so, so on the, on the open end of that, obviously, if there's no answer, there's no answer, you just give it, right?
Right.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, I'm gonna go to that. Alright, so we've merged into numbers, question number twenty. And I think some of these are gonna be replaced, right, with the, Justin, with the other form of the question, right?
So the first one, we were asking about in a different form.
We're asking in a different way.
The second one, we're asking about in a different form. I had questions about this next set, which was, "How long you're waiting at traffic lights?" And...
Yeah, what are we trying to do, what are we trying to do there?
It wasn't clear to me, yeah, we were trying to get at their total wait time throughout downtown at all the traffic lights combined, or any single traffic light?
I, I think, I think the second to last question, this takeout. "I do not regularly have to drive on roads with the decks or have poples or otherwise planted." I don't know if that is...
Yeah, I think that could be replaced with the open end, which is, "If there are specific segments of road that need to be repaired or replaced, please note their location below."
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so, the, the idea was that, that those would all be covered by twenty-one as, as the... You know, with, with the traffic lights, you know, City Council has had a couple of items, or discussed a couple of items, and gotten proposals from Fortham for a couple of items related to traffic signaling. So this was an attempt to call out those, those discussions. And then, the question about poples and trouble with, with specific streets, Andy, is that, you know, if you regularly travel down a road that is not what currently well-maintained, that you disagree with, then you all say specifically which one in question twenty-four.
Is that information that we already have from other sources?
Sidewalk segments or road?
Dan, do you have that information?
With, 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 within the...
Within the survey or outside of the survey?
Outside of the survey.
Yes.
Then, I would not put it in the survey, because we are asking people to give us information that we already have. And then we have that, that built in expectation of, of, I've given you this information while you are not doing something about it, and they might not know that it's already known, and it's in a plan for whatever year to be done.
So. Completely twenty.
Well, I think that, I think that, as we said, first two are, first two are being replaced by some of Jamie's from page thirty-six. I would be with those three.
Stoplight ones.
Stoplight ones, yeah. The one about the potholes is, is question fourteen. Jamie's. And the jurisdiction. Yeah. I wouldn't say yes, so. And if you wanna, if, if there's an open end, and what you want to ask about the road network or something else, twenty-one will give you that. All right, so we're getting through this, we're on, uh, topic is public safety. Um, the nineteen. Also, page thirty-nine of Jamie's, starts on page thirty-nine at least, if I can. Along with both of them. Thirty-three through thirty-nine, those three are safety ones, I think. So, um, page nineteen, question point two says, please review the following statements below related to the city's emergency services. These indicate whether you agree or disagree with the statements below, let me just read a couple of these, just to prove for you, Josh, and just to kind of get the flavor. So, Justin, you, you and Josh have proposed, I feel safe living, working, recreating in the city of Dexter. That's a safety question, how do we, how, how safe do you feel in here? Just moving about, it's really not, that's really not a city's emergency services question, I don't think, but, um, I feel safe walking in the city after dark. That's not really a emergency services question either, I don't think, but it's, I'm getting how it could be. Now we get into, the police services provided within the city of Dexter meet or exceed my expectations. Okay, so to me, that's a different category than the first two questions. Okay. Fire response service provided for the city actually meet or exceed my expectations. Okay, so. Did anybody here specifically ask for those questions? Notice I'm learning, I didn't know you'd ask for that. Sorry, instead of saying, who came up with this? Where did that come from? Which I apologize. Are, are those questions that we are, we, we are trying to ascertain?
I don't need them, and I think one potentially, I don't think it's specific enough to provide meaningful information, so I had opted to. For example, somebody could have low expectations to begin with. And that's perhaps, would be surprising, given the state of public attitudes towards certain vacancies. So, I don't know, I don't know what we should get out of it, I'd be fine with these three.
Sure, I, I, I agree. As with every view of one. The third, the fourth, and the fifth one on that page nineteen, all the police services provided meet or exceed, the fire service provided meet or exceed, and the medical response service meet or exceed. I don't think we need answers to this question.
What, what questions are the?
Let me, let me, let me, let me just read them out, oh, the first two?
Yeah, first two.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm, I have no, I have no problem with those questions, they're just, I don't think they relate to emergency services.
If we keep them in this format, in a grid of some format, I think it would be helpful to had, uh, to add an open end, like where they don't feel safe kind of a thing. So, just along the lines of the other format, so you could either say, um, like my eight through twelve questions, which were, I don't have anything locked up right now, so I can't find anything specific, but if you say, um, you know, do you feel safe living, working, recreating in the city of Dexter? Yes, no, please specify areas where you're, you know, you don't feel safe, or something like that. Or please specify areas where you don't feel safe walking in the dark, walking in the dark, just so we figure out what to do about it, so either one open end after the grid, or split those into two yes, no questions, and the other specify.
Remind me, are, are, are parks officially closed at a certain point? I mean, are they technically closed at dark?
I, I think for ordinance, it is, um, as posted. And not all our parks are posted.
Okay, that's Jamie's. Okay, all right, great, I just. All right, let me just keep reading here, I believe there is a sufficient police presence in the city of Dexter.
Like that question.
You like that question?
Yep.
Okay. So, that's a police oriented one. Okay, all right.
And you like that question because issue, or do you just like the level of impact?
I, I. That's a good point. I don't know if it's the phrasing of the question, but I like something in, in the sense of police presence in the city.
So, so would you, if, 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 if somebody wanted to disagree with that,
Maybe it's a.
Is there a follow up question that we want them to answer? Like, you know, like, do we not, do we think there's not enough speed enforcement? Is that the presence here, is that, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I like it, so maybe a format like similar to others that Jamie has proposed, a yes, no, and what are the areas of issue, something like that, or areas of concern.
So I proposed my thirty-five is a, is like that, I don't know if you.
Page forty?
I said, where, if anywhere, would you like to see greater traffic enforcement in the city? And what is the nature of your concerns at those locations? For example, speeding, running stop signs.
Yeah, so I, I think that's a more direct question, if that's a topic of concern.
I know those are the resident concerns, I've heard the safety things, I didn't keep anything about safety in my questionnaire, I find keeping it. Um, so this idea of police presence, to me, the concerns I've heard are related to traffic enforcement. Is there some other, uh, police service that we could ask a more specific question on? Or do you think we would get what we need, figuring out if people feel safe, and figuring out about traffic enforcement? Or is there something else? I can't think of anything.
Yeah, I think safety and traffic are the two, so those two questions could answer.
Okay, so we want to take the top two. We want to take Jamie's thirty-five. Is that right?
Yep.
And the, we want to start with, I believe there's sufficient police presence, and then go with these, the safety, and then the, the traffic ones, that's all. Group those four together.
Sure.
And we want to just call that related to, do you want to call it public safety and, and police enforcement, or something like that, or, or, or traffic enforcement? As a category?
We just call it public safety.
Public safety.
I think it's a non. It's a third traffic problem, that's a public safety.
Okay.
Would people think of traffic as public safety?
I don't know if they would, I, I.
Yeah.
We could have it, it could be related, but.
Yeah.
Think about that, Justin, if you would. All right, the bottom ones. I would be willing to pay more in taxes in order to increase the amount of police services provided.
I don't like any of these three, maybe for the same reason people didn't like the DDA of throwing in cost to the other question, because it just kind of, the idea of numbers and money just kind of came out of nowhere, it's only placed in context.
Well, and, and, you know, so, so let me, let me steer that question a little bit, or let me dive into that a little bit, so. If we don't think we have enough police coverage, we could offer or pay for more. I mean, our, our contract, I'm not saying we should, I'm trying to bring some air, I'll just text. I, I, we, we have been in a mode, as long as I'm aware, where we paid for three police service units. Plus, we pay half of a police service unit for the schools, which is very generous on our part, obviously, the agreement, her initial agreement was that they would pay eighty, and we would pay twenty. When they were cash strapped, they came to us, and we modified the agreement, we took half of it. Now, we get the benefit of that, as, because that officer stays in town at the schools, nine months out of the year actively working within school, and that, that offer is definitely here. The other three that we pay for, equivalents, we leave, are, are subject to the discretion of the, where their calls, where the calls are, you know, they go within out of the district, right? We've been reading all that in our packet, and what does that mean, and are they here, are they not here? I'm not trying to say they aren't here, but. So, you know, if, if we, if, we've always assumed that three is the number. We share, that we share those deputies within a district that includes Webster Township and Dexter Township, two very big areas, much like our fire department. Dexter Township also pays for three police service units. You know how many Webster pay for? They don't, they don't pay for the same number, yet we share all of those deputies. Some people will say that's unfair. But my, my point is, if, if, we, we could, we could pay for more, but that would be another hundred sixty-five thousand per PSU, or whatever it is. You know, that would come out of our dental fund. So I, I don't think we need to ask these questions, I think that if, if that was necessarily, but I, I mean, that option is there, we could approach sheriff and say, hey, we want more coverage.
Yeah.
But it's a slippery slope, because you're gonna pay, you know, you're gonna get, you know.
I don't want the questions, and I also am not prepared to offer up more money when I don't fully understand how that money, you know, how, how what we're paying for is being allocated. And we could very likely pay for another person, and that doesn't, isn't going to guarantee that that person's going to be here.
Right.
So I.
Probably not.
I would need to have a whole lot more information to that.
Well, and I, I have, um, suggested in the past that, that, you know, a, a large amount of our is tied back to taxes. A large amount of the taxes that are collected in this community are within the DDA district. Over time, as things redevelop and increase in value, that amount is going to be more and more. There is nothing in the DDA act that would prevent the DDA from contributing to the cost of police coverage. Like right now, they pay, they, they're in the DDA's budget, they give back, what do we have? Michelle's, forty thousand a year, or sixty-five?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. We had dropped, we had dropped way down, but they, they, they pay the city sixty-five thousand out of their money to help offset the this, this team does, to take care of the downtown, they help provide for that, so that the streets we've made in the parks, they're helping cover the parks. That's a benefit we got. The same, there could be a future line item in the DDA budget that that they pay, help pay for the services as those possible. Just to do.
Yeah, I mean, if we go down this, and I don't think that this is the place to introduce necessarily the survey. I have heard people ask, why don't we have our own police force? And I understand there are cost issues related to that. If at some point, that's the route we want to go to, I think the question to ask at some point to the public would be, would you be willing to pay more taxes, you know, placing context, to have a dedicated police?
Right.
I mean, I'd be curious to know if people want that, would they pay more for that? Uh, I don't know that I need to know, do they want to pay more to have another lieutenant that can go anywhere?
I personally am very comfortable with Washington County Sheriff's, but I, I like especially this sheriff, I think Sheriff Clayton has been fantastic.
It just seems like the only way to guarantee police presence, I think it's have a dedicated police force, because I don't know our ability to control police presence here without it.
Yeah, Jamie, the, I think the perception, we, we have a unique perception, because we're looking at a piece of data that says, they openly transparently say, we're in the area this much, or we're out of the area this much. It doesn't mean they're not here or accessible when somebody needs them.
Right.
Okay, and that's, and, and we're, we're small enough that, you know, to get from one side of us to the other is not hard. So if they happen to be sitting up at the Dexter United Methodist Church, for whatever reason, throwing out a report, you know, technically, they might be out of our city, but they're, you know, two minutes to get to the problem, the site of. All right, so we're, we're across off those three, it's bottom. Everybody's agree with that? Sorry, I'm slowing down, just moving. Um, we need to ask the question about interaction with the police service provider. I think similar to the other two, I would, I would pull these out of the one, three, or four, I would take out.
Yeah.
Very agree.
I don't think we need to ask that.
Any interest in just an open end about that specific to where, I don't feel strongly either way, but the compromise is a open end. I find it, it's coming up.
We could also, version one, any questions? The sheriff about police or fire.
Some over that.
I'm not going with the more open ended about that, we want to try to pose one, with relation to that, I don't care what's on that. All right, so we're gonna take twenty-five, twenty-six coming out, all right, so we're down to, um, page twenty-four, question's twenty-seven. Uh, City Council, this is, this is, um, these are still on your emergency services, but City Council's currently valued at two primary sites for approved fire facilities. City of both properties, these sites are existing site of the fire station downtown, eighty-one forty, and property at intersection of Dexter and Arbor Road and Meadowview, classroom, no preschool. If you have a preference for a location of approved fire facilities, please share it below. And then the options are, keep the station, move the station, either location, decide no opinion, or other.
I'm in favor of striking both of these questions, only because I don't, it's not clear to me that we have a specific question that as a council, we're ready to ask to the public. In terms of timing, I think it would have been great if we got to a point where there were two options council was considering, and either there was a split in council, or there wasn't a split, and we wanted very specific feedback on those two things. I think there's relevant information here, but I don't know how meaningful it would be to help us on our conversations, or how, I don't know, I don't feel strongly about asking questions at the fire station right now, because I just don't think right of place where we can ask meaningful questions about it.
Okay. Other thoughts?
But maybe this information will help somebody else.
The, the other question that's there on that page, just keep my it slowing here, is please check which, if any, of the following statements you agree with, the sheriff's substation should be located in the same place as the fire station. No matter where that is, the sheriff's office should remain downtown, no matter where the fire station is, or the sheriff's office substation should be located outside of downtown. I'm in agreement that I don't think, I don't think we need to answer either, ask me the ones. There, there's more education than would be needed to come, more context would be needed to put on the page to ask this. But, but if you want to leave them in, I don't mind seeing your response to it. I mean, I mean, our goals, our goal and objective is to, to continue to work on the problem statement, to, to continue to build consensus on what options are out there for addressing whenever, as we progress, right? So we get to, when we get to the point where we have a more defined set of questions we want to ask, I think that's the point in doing it.
Directly to the public. Yep. That's the only thing, is I don't want to lose, you know, I don't, I just want to make sure we do ask that at some point.
Well, yeah, okay, but then, but then, then it would be a survey specific to that topic.
Not necessarily in a survey, sorry, I should just say, you know.
Our public media.
Oh, oh, no, it would be, it would be communication, you said that way. Related to that specific topic.
Yes. That's, yeah, then I'm fine with that.
So then Josh is updating real time, how long the survey is now? Okay, page twenty-five, question twenty-nine, this is under the new topic, community and economic development. What types of additional commercial development are needed in the city of Dexter? And a whole bunch there, dental services, especially the shops, restaurants, five through restaurants.
And, and, and these were out of. And, and, and these were out of the two thousand and one, certainly.
Okay, so this is a review question from two thousand and one, sorry, sir.
I'm in favor of striking it because it's not clear to me what we would, what we would do about it. We talked about this a little bit last time, where there was a lot of feedback, we need more restaurants. But then there is the whole, like, balance between what, what the developers want, you know, what the market will bear, that kind of a thing, and it's not clear to me what we would do. I, I, maybe staff knows what they would do with this information. It's not clear.
Well, it, 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 um I mean, it touches on what kind of permitted uses we want to allow. But it mixes a whole bunch of things. Like, we talked about commercial development, there are categories like industrial, which are completely separated in our organs, you know, on purpose, so I don't think there's any value in this question. Michelle, tell me your thoughts, please.
To answer all of your questions, including yours, right now you operate mostly on a business retention model. A business retention model, make sure the businesses in the community are happy, thriving, et cetera. Because when you have that, they'll tell one friend or two friends, and they'll tell two friends. That's a really good model, especially for communities with limited budgets. You ask this question if you want to move from a business retention model to a business attraction model. That comes with a whole set of other expensive, um, direction. It doesn't mean you're getting rid of the one. You're adding something else and it's totally different quality.
So then there's a more specific question. Do you want, um do you want the city to be actively attracting new businesses to the community? If so, what businesses are you interested in tracking? I mean, is it, is it more like that?
It could be.
Could be. Um, a more refined question, if you would, would be would you prefer to see national chains established presence in the city versus, um, low and grown businesses or, um, pop type businesses? Because that's important to understand. If nothing else, then being able to explain to people if they want national chains, why they can't craft that. Demographics, trips, uh, vehicle trips on roads, things like that. So there are limits within what the city can actually do. Um, so, there's just a lot that...
I personally would take it out.
Yeah, I don't think in its current format it's helpful, and I wonder if it's too nuanced to be asking the public, like, do you want cities, do you want additional, city staff to be allocating additional resources, should we actively?
Again, I don't know what we, I don't know what we do unless, I mean, unless we're gonna try and go talk to...
Right. The other thing that you could have known is your consequences. Somebody looks at that and thinks, oh, is the city looking actually to expand its boundaries? Are we going to be actively annexing?
Right.
Um, all of that starts, you never know what we're gonna, but that's unintended consequences that I would think would come up.
I, I don't think it's...
Chelsea, this word. Well, I mean, it's the fluid, the fluid. Takes out, and it puts them in after the talk, all remaining one thing, and that's a possibility. Really?
Right.
So for me, like, how do we gauge what, what we need in this city? So when, um country, the country market went out of business, I've heard a lot about, oh, now we are left with only one grocery store in town, and that limits people. Yes, Meyer is close, but, you know, there was a lot of, like, it was nice to have two options. Um, especially for those that push it is not affordable. Um, and now it's sources that need to go to, like Meyer or other.
So that's a, that's a function of the market. The city does not, in its immediate surrounding area, does not have enough roof tax, hence household, um, per capita income to support two grocery stores within its boundaries. In some ways, it's amazing the length of time you actually did have to. Especially with Jackson Road corridor, the length of the area. There may be a potential for a more boutiquey type grocery, the your own fruit market kind of thing, uh, in a downtown. But it's small, it's specialized, and it's going to be more, more, people with more disposable income.
For it's more available.
More disposable income. Where, um there, there isn't, then I'm aware of any way to get that more cost efficient grocery store, like, kind of, back.
The garage, the garage's, oh, Manchester, just has been able to explore it on that.
But that's their only one.
Right, that is, and it is it, that's a boutique store.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a boutique store and it's not going to be expensive. It's going to be at, at a pushing level cost or above. I think that's one of the things that, that was, that's the Justin Dellinger part of it.
What?
That's the one that Justin Dellinger is, uh, part of.
Well, people, people, I mean, I think when we talked about affordability here, but I mean, there's a lot of sentiment that it's great for the grocery store, but in the downtown somewhere. Something that was walkable, especially now that we're starting to add more residents within, walking downtown. You know, there's a lot more, right?
Yeah.
You know, that, people would have loved to have the old location, nothing against the kind of druthers, but you know, there'd be a lot of people who would walk right there and come back now. You may not. You know, based on where you are, right, New York?
Yeah.
But that, that, that would be cool if that was, if we had something like that. But you've got to find the right entrepreneur that wants to do it.
Not only that, yes, people wouldn't need it downtown, will walk. That's still not enough to keep that business in business.
Oh, right.
So it has to also be a destination that people will come to.
Go in the cast draw, right?
So, I, I think you're, things are moving in that direction. Look at, look at Agro Hall and Argus.
Yep.
Um, um, so I know that there are, that there are people interested in doing something like that in Dexter. Um, they just don't have the financial wherewithal to do it yet, but I know that they're looking at it.
Okay, let me, let me move down. So that sounds like twenty-nine's coming out.
Yeah.
About thirty.
I wanted to strike it. For somewhat similar reasons, it wasn't thirty, well, we would do that. Maybe I just, I don't know.
Last thought, thoughts? I mean, I, my, my comment on housing has that's the phrase we, we recognized back in was it fifteen? The homeless and middle concept? You know, I think that the fact that we're more aware of that, or we have been aware of that is important. But there's certainly been a lot of different housing options that have come into play here over the last decade, so to speak, since the two of three part of some of these. I think the variety's good, but I don't know how you, I don't know what. I'm not sure what we do with this. I'm okay with the question, just, I'm really asking the question, it's not a hard one.
No, I think it, for me, is actually, um, is another one, like, similar to restaurants and grocery store, that you have information outside of the survey that gives us that view, right? Do we have information about these type of housing and housing in Dexter outside of survey that would give us that view that then we are frightened of having it here?
Well, well, you know, where the answers could be used. Spinning this a little bit, you know, we just had, uh, what's the group that came in comments sale? There's a, there's a group out of Brighton, I think that's what they are, that's interested in was interested in learning about their preferred front rod. Now, we, we just went through an open RFP from end of November, beginning of September through January, and we got nobody who was interested. This group is now, you know, wondering you know, what's, what's our story, so we...
And how responsive would we be to apartments?
Yeah, so Zach, Zach and I and Mike and the DDA were able to join the shell, Josh on, uh...
So thirty-fourty-five Broad Street?
Yeah, those of us that were able to come to, on that committee. On Wednesday, we met with three people that were part of that group. You know, I made the comment that public input that we had received over the past ten years of redevelopment of that site, the public preferred condominiums over apartments. That was the general sentiment that we learned. First group foremost had proposed luxury apartments. And that didn't sell as much, if I'm attentive, as the the next round with Norfolk, they went through it, the public sentiment was condominium, but you know, so you could use an answer to a question like this to say, if they were asking, well, what kind of housing would you want to see there? You could say, well, our public thinks we need, you know, more, whatever.
Do you want to make it thirty-fourty-five Broad Street specific? Would you want to make the question more thirty-fourty-five Broad Street, Broad Street specific?
I mean, yeah, we could ask questions, you know, what would you like to see that property used for?
I think that would be helpful. Because, yeah, we're not, it's not like we're talking about, there's a whole opportunity for development, so you might as well focus people on the next thing that seems like it's about to happen.
Well, I, 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 I just, um, it's eleven twenty. I'd like to try and get through this if we can. I know we're spending all the time on this and not on the other topics, but there are some other topics in that packet that are worthy of special on us by our body. As it relates to thirty-fourty-five, there's just property things there that are, I think. It's another layer, you know, the whole, you know, that kind of thing.
Could they come on a meeting agenda, a regular meeting agenda?
It all can, you know, I've, I've always tried to be conscious of how far, how long our people want to be at the meeting in the business, so we try to do that in the meeting versus having that in depth. I don't like to feel rushed through something.
Right.
I always feel like these give us the opportunity to just think and pause, like, not holding anybody up to pause.
Well, even if you took one of them, I mean, you guys would have to decide or if somebody could motion on that. We only have two, I think, consideration or discussion items. So maybe there's one discussion item that we didn't get to, the one topic that could go one day night.
We can bring up, yeah, we can bring up that.
If there's something time sensitive.
Okay, so, um, do you guys want to think about some thirty-fourty-five Broad questions that we might be interested? I hope we leave that in our hands to come back to something? Then we could move on. Okay, next, item thirty-one, or question thirty-one is directly related to code enforcement. How satisfied or dissatisfied are you with the current level of code enforcement? So, growth of lawn and or weeds.
It would be open.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say, the, the, the step, this is, this is, um, right. Snowman, is that from, from where? From sidewalks? So, I was trying to make this more specific, you know, snow removal from, and I would, I would do two categories. Say snow removal from residential or snow removal from I want to ask that question. We handle some of that. A good chunk of it. We're always, you guys are always done first. Okay, I, I'm okay to ask the multiple questions. Existence of vacant buildings or dwellings? Do we have those?
We have, we do have, we have three vacant dwellings. Um, they're owned and fairly maintained as far as structures. Um, the question coming out of that is there's, there's as long as they're vacant, or as long as the vacant structure is being maintained, there's not a lot we can do about. So, I have not had to cite any of those vacant buildings. They all have empty, three residential buildings. Have not had to cite them for the structure.
So is, is one of those over on Edison?
Yeah.
The white one, the little white house? So, there?
Um, what is it? There's one on Dover between
Or Dover, sorry, I asked, Dover, Dover one.
There's one on Second.
And there's one on
And there's one on Eighth and Upper Street.
Okay, so we have three.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
All of them are some of them.
And, and, and are there, yeah, okay, the blue house on Second, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, what is our question then? Are we satisfied with the level of code enforcement? So what's the concern? If they're, if they're maintaining that, what's the concern?
I mean, the concern is, there is, I mean, there's nothing we can do about the concern.
Well, that's what I guess.
The potential.
Right, so I would change minimally, I would change existence to maintenance. Because what you're enforcing is maintenance, not the existence of. Somebody might get confused and be like, oh, we can make it go away.
Right.
So like minimally change existence to maintenance. And even if we're doing all we can, it would be helpful to know if, which I would be in favor of an open end here at the end to basically just saying if you're aware of any, you know, potential code violations, share. Anyways, I have that in my question, but, uh they could say where, but it would be, even if we think we're doing everything we can in all of these areas, it would be helpful to know if people are satisfied or dissatisfied with what we're able to do, so we can figure out, maybe there, there's an education component, or there is a reallocation of resources or something.
But I mean, as of right now, the three, the three that are vacant have not had a code violation?
Other than the grass itself. The structure itself, so
But I, I don't think we should ask the question. I don't think we should clue about it.
Yeah, I think I don't, I don't think it needs to be on there. I think it opens the door for a bunch of complaints that there's nothing we can do about.
Well, I mean, I know the preferences that are vacant, right? And that's the obvious preference, is that, that somebody's there, right?
Right.
But we can't force that.
Yeah.
Not with our current code. Which is part of why we go way through the whole rental inspection, private maintenance code, reviews, all of that. At least for me, I keep these three properties and any others that might come up in my, in the back of my mind, because I I need to find a way to get them addressed, having vacant, unoccupied properties in heaven is contrary to your goals for a clean, beautiful, more convenient.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, three is a pretty small number.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, there's, there's really
The scheme of the
I mean, I mean, is there a better use, or would you like to see something better done there? Either a family moved in or a single, anybody moved in to maintain it? You know, the, the one on Second Street is a pretty large sized piece of property. I think that that person thinks that there's a redevelopment opportunity there.
There's a, there's a redevelopment opportunity for all the properties.
Okay. What, what did you say?
The, the person, the person that have our, yeah, property.
Yeah.
So you think of people, John.
But I mean, three is a pretty small number.
Three is a pretty small number. In the street, we drew.
Okay, I, I don't know whether we need to ask a question. I don't know whether to ask a question about it.
Yeah, especially just then that it opens up to like, I've had people ask them, is this house vacant? I'm like, no, no, people live in there. And it's not even a house that's like in disrepair. So I could go either way. I'm fine with everything in the spread. I was just like an open end.
At the end.
At the end, and I have the draft in it somewhere.
I I like the accumulation of John's work and or notable vehicles.
Down is not here across the street from her, we had, especially at the base. There's a car's parked here, it's not like it's moving.
Long time. They're going to take the two off the top.
No. Yeah, so. And then down the corner of, yes.
Where, where are you taking it?
Oh, from beyond Corvo into Baker, that's that street.
Oh, on Corvo into Baker.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's been a house there before the Putza. Seconds, fourth, second, second, and.
The one that's under construction?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, he's getting to the point where his reading stuff go pretty good, blending things together. With the construction material that he has out there and he has had for years. Has nothing to do with what he's doing inside or outside, but.
Oh, you mean you don't want it branded in Putza?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we are in regular communication with that particular property.
There's a lot of progress right there.
Yeah, it looked a lot better.
So, so what 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 do we mean by pollution? I'm just still not, most that I've heard.
And light pollution?
What's that?
Like people with vehicles that are too loud or people with outdoor lighting that's too bright?
I I think there's a section of the general vote that feels specifically with pollution. I don't recall offhand.
Maybe you need to put reds.
Can we put a descriptor as well? I just, yeah, I mean, are we talking about people dumping open sewage or are we talking? I mean, I mean, noise pollution or light pollution are different to me, they're all.
So one of the, one of the, yeah, one of the difficulties is taking to the wording. That's in the general code of nuisance section, which is where these come along. And putting it into a survey question that's clear and concise, so.
Again, again, we could use this to educate, you know, we could reference the section or we could say. As it relates to the nuisance, portion of the code ordinances or, you know, whatever, there's nothing wrong with educating people on where we're coming from if that helps. I just think that that needs a descriptor. Okay, now we're going to add an open end one, right? All right. I'm onto home works and trees. Please read the following statements regarding trash collection. It indicates, cross off the indicate. Whether you agree or disagree with each statement. My trash is picked up regularly on the day that it's scheduled. I like the ninety six gallon carts that have been provided for trash and recycling. Trash is not dropped or left on my property after pickup. She's not dropped or left on my property.
Like out of your bin?
No, it's like if somebody throws inches of garbage in their entry garbage truck and maybe.
Our cycles picked up regularly on the day that it is scheduled. And so I would, that's the same as the first question, right? But specific, right, they're specific, yeah, same question, but I've just seen if those words are the same, different topic, right? What's your point of consistency?
To make it more, it might be better to have those right next to each other so the contrast is more obvious.
That's right. Especially in the top three, right? My trash is picked up regularly, my recycle is picked up regularly, my yard is picked up regularly. One, two, three. Loose leaves are collected within a two week period of my raking them to the road as instructed. As instructed. We're not really living as instructed in there, are we? My brother's going to have a field day with that question. Self-proclaimed voice of the people, that's my brother. Loose leaves are collected within a two week period of my raking them up to the road. Yeah, okay, so we're, that's a frequency, we're trying to gauge how long are they sitting there, right? Now, do we get complaints about that?
We we could like, so you know, if if we're picking them up once every two weeks. In like December, for example, or in November, December. If somebody rakes them out on Thursday after we pick up on Wednesday, we we might get a call. But I would just say, you know, they're coming by on the specific date would be to delete that.
So I I guess, is that an exact, I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is what are we doing with this? Are we trying to ask an exact question? And is that the, have we defined that that's the acceptable level of service? I don't even know if I want to filter that. I mean, they're, they're getting around as fast as they possibly can, when they possibly can, with the other things that they're balancing. A lot of it is dependent, a lot of it is dependent upon when the leaves fall. Again, I'm just trying to think, are we, I don't want to write something that that it's a. I don't, I don't want to reading anywhere that if you rake them, we'll be there in two weeks. That's not the level of service we've put out there. We we asked them to get them to the curb. And then, then we do the best we can to get there. If there's a problem that we're not getting there. They can't wait, well, they can call, but if like when we have to break a park or whatever. Then we go and blast out an email to hate. Right, we got a problem, this is why your leaves aren't going to be picked up. So I'd rather not have a question that relates to a standard that we haven't set, I guess, right?
There's a big difference between the leaves in September and how fast we get around when the leaf will melt. Yeah, and we all realize that. When they start to fall after, we don't want all the leaves to fall at one time, but they don't. And when we get the bulk of it, it's obviously going to take us a little bit longer. We have four people and a lot of ourselves is going on too, I think. I think it's, I don't know if it's a bad question, it's how you ask. But at the same time, if they're not satisfied and it's majority, the only thing we can do is add.
Well, we're not going to ask the question. Should we continue leaf pickup? Right, everybody likes the service, right? Thanks, that is not.
There's something we don't, but they, I don't know if they're sold. I mean, environmental standpoint is a terrible.
Go back to the old days.
Right, but before we were fine.
Oh, I'm not saying. No, it's, there's some kind of.
They can thank cousins.
Yeah, we're doing that.
Let's have, let's have a permit through the state to do that.
Hey, if you ever see the name right here. That's, that's the part of.
That makes you feel better, right?
And ask Paul, what did this town look like when you were?
It's quite a rough time, of course, the rules of rest, we have to have. King and Mary were back and forth all the time, outside and inside. All I had to do was just wait for a while, pretty soon. neighbors on the streets, they were going to burn and we couldn't even, I didn't read your question.
It's an impressive pileup that happens in the season. I don't think we can do a lot better with what we're doing with the leaf, they're coming fired up. Compared to what it used to be when I was a kid.
And there's, there's.
Like small city.
The, the, the piles get something that they have to go and like turn the piles over so that a fire doesn't start at the core.
We may have lots of compost too, though. We take temperatures.
The other thing, that one question is specific to your public service, if you've done it and their service they provide. All the rest of your questions in this are very specific to the waste management or the company you hire to provide that service. Do you really want to cross pollinate? And and and.
So so it all relates to our, our solid waste on.
And and the fee.
And the fee.
And the fee, right, it relates to the twenty five dollar fifty cents of revenues.
No, I get that, I get that, I get that.
But it's not, it's not explained that way, we know that.
Right, we just say, we say public works and treat.
Well, I I think personally that that point.
Yeah.
Well, Corey, if I, I think, I think we need, if we're going to ask a question about leaf pickup, I think it's a different question. It's why, I don't think that's the right question.
I mean, do you have a question about leaf pickup?
I think some of all of these could maybe even just be replaced with an open end. So in terms of, you know, trash or recycling or yard wasting picked up regularly. We'd probably do a survey of council members and where we live in the city to get a sense of is it regular, is it not regular, so. I don't know how meaningful that is, although there could be a particular residence that's always missed or something like that. So I just wonder, is it better just as an open question, do you have any questions, comments or concerns about? Your trash recycling or, you know, like bulk item pickup or something like that, and if somebody, if there's something they know they want to tell us, you tell us.
I think I have an open end question, so I'll address all of them.
Also, that's a, this entire thing only applies to somebody who lives in the city. I mean, like, we can't do anything about the, so it kind of takes me back to my first comment about. What are the questions that we can group about that then there is a logic that I live in the city? I mean, like if somebody lives outside of four eight one three zero or even outside of the city, can we do anything about it?
Well, so we're, I think we're bouncing here. The, I think the first question is as it relates to our goals and objectives. Are we trying to do, do we have a goal or objective or something we're trying to learn about or change or modify or maybe new services? If the answer is no, then to balance that, the open end of the question. Covers your concern about, hey, let's at least give people a chance to comment on it, on the topic. Is that fair? That makes sense, dude?
Safe for the, the last two, we've been quick enough to.
Yeah, you're going to hear about all of them and ask an open ended question on this general topic, okay? Cause I mean, we, we know people love with the stick pickup and the. They don't like one of those sticks, but they love, they love to just throw them in the power. Thirty three, if you indicated you just, okay, so where is this? Wait, wait, thirty four is tree trimming. Now, this is a little bit different. Please read the following statements on tree trimming and maintenance for trees in cities right of way. It's defined as the area between sidewalk and the road. I know we don't have sidewalk and every street, but. So please check all statements that you agree with. Trees in the right way are well kept and trimmed, trees in the right way look healthy. There's fish on the trees and trees. So Jamie, I'm guessing your, your thought is, is there, want to ask an open ended question that says, is there a tree that you think should be?
Well, yeah, and I quite opened ended, yeah, my fifteen and sixteen are my replacement for that. So I said, are you aware of trees in the city's right of way, typically the area between the sidewalk and the road that need trimming or maintenance or look unhealthy? Yes, please specify location of trees needing attention, no. Sixteen, are you aware of city rights of way that could use additional trees? Yes, please specify locations needing more trees, no. So I, I sort of combined one and two and then three, and I didn't do anything about the cost sharing. I thought that could go in a newsletter or something. Education thing, so.
I'm okay, I'm okay with fifteen and sixteen.
With what?
With replacing this with theories fifteen and sixteen on page thirty seven.
Would that be helpful to know that feedback? Would that be helpful to DDA or do you feel like you have a sense of where this all is anyways?
The latest program that we put in place.
Probably that should take care of a lot.
Well, it's going to resolve a lot of problems, but it's kind of like the sidewalks too. If something pops up and we don't see it, we try to do the survey. It'd be really nice to get ahead of it before somebody gets hurt. You know, when somebody hit with a branch or something dangerous, so I don't know how that.
Right.
Okay, elections. Does indicate your voting method preference. Heard of voting person, I've heard of votes, I did not vote. So what's the, what's the goal in asking that question?
So in twenty twenty, you saw a really large increase in the number of folks voting absentee. If that trend is going to continue, there is the potential to reduce the number of precincts that we have to have. Right now, we have three precincts and an AV counting board. If we're going to have, you know, fifty to seventy percent absentee turnout. Then we could delete one of our first precincts, revert it into, you know, back into the, the two that we had before. And just go with two precincts and an AV counting board.
Exactly, because of COVID, we think of that.
Yeah, good, 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 good. COVID had, I think COVID had a lot to do with it, but people might have tried it, like it, and want to do it going forward.
Well, the change to be able to have no reason absentee.
Exactly, that's.
Yeah, I would rather wait and see what the actual voting patterns are. I mean, this is a survey, this is in like the gold standard. The gold standard on the trend is going to be the trend that happens at voting, so. My general thought about these questions where I think they're more relevant, more immediately after we've had an election. Especially these about, you know, how satisfied were you with this? Cause it's almost, you know, so you're an absentee, you've had an election. But if there are, if there are cases of pressure that will have to be planned for August and or, you know, November. I'd be happy to have those, it just was a pretty good, these are the questions that would help with planning, so.
Okay, so thirty five, we're not going to ask. Thirty six, we're going to consider waiting till after election to see if you want to make the. That could be done in the super survey, frankly.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you need to know anything, Dustin, beforehand? Or you can dig on it and come back to us.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we have our process down pretty well.
And we have what, three thousand registered voters roughly?
About thirty four hundred.
Thirty four hundred? And what was the percentage of voted absentee? Just to clarify, do you remember?
Fifty to sixty percent?
That's pretty high, right?
Yeah. I mean, we, we, we had eighty percent turnout total in November of twenty twenty.
Okay, now you're fine on what's that? Now you're fine.
One thing, I think in, in the other set of topics that we have. Likely in the next couple of meetings, I'm going to be pitching to city council relocating. The whole invocations for precincts one and three from the senior center to here.
That door, drop that door?
Something like that, yeah.
They're going to double scale here.
Yeah, I think maybe it'd be a cranky thing.
We don't have enough grass area out there for all the silly signs. Do we want that in front of City Hall? All that clutter.
Yeah, it's like a lost advertising. Somebody's like going to drive by, don't see the sign. Whereas at senior center, you could sign up.
Um, just one one comment I was thinking about. Related to this. While we do have people, they will come, we should make sure that we do everything again and make sure the sidewalks, things are accessible. That they leave to both the spots. That's a funny corner down there where that sidewalk transitions across into the bushes. And this with the railroad, we gotta, we have a, we have to talk to the railroad about improving that cop spot. We should get that started so that, you know, someone wants to walk to City Hall.
Yeah, so so. So so the the railroad is is planning a project in in the stretch. Um, and that that we've given informal notice that we would like to see that.
It's already on the books. It is already on the top of, what what decade is that? With the railroad, that's hard to tell. Well, that's why I say we might not, we might not push to say this is a. I think we were pushing on this project. Really? Okay, maybe I maybe I would do it. Sorry. That is definitely part of the whole corridor there, was getting. Their access. Okay, um, page thirty, question thirty seven, list taxes utility bill payment systems. Please indicate your agreement or disagreement with the following statements. So agree, disagree, or no opinion at all. I use or haven't used the city's online payment system. That only yes or no?
I like these and just proposed a yes, no with the open end to provide more details. So I'd be curious to know Marie would compare, contrast, or. They're my twenty, twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three. Essentially asking the same information, just in the other format. That's right at all pages on it.
Page thirty seven.
Page thirty seven. So basically, say, have you ever used the city's online payments system? Yes, no. Are you able to pay your city water sewer refuse and tax bills using your preferred method of payment? Yes, no. Please explain something like that, so we can figure out what's, if there's something we can do about that.
I mean, they could, they could be in this format, will be yes and no here, right?
That's true. And then I guess.
And then open at the file. Is that fair, Justin? Let's move ahead, everybody.
I have a question though. Is there any interest from council's perspective of revisiting the fees? Or credit cards and monthly payments? I mean, if I haven't looked up yet, cause I'm very interested, but I haven't looked up, um, how much fees our our customers pay. But, um, I know the past has been, you know, we don't wanna sort of make any fees. So I I miss, I don't know if it's it's worthwhile having a question about whether or not people pay fees. Or.
I don't know. I mean, I I mean, the goal, I I'm gonna say my my own opinion, the goal would be if there's no fees, that's the best, right? But I mean, there has to be some fee because of the service.
Right. And I think if we were.
Yeah, you choose whether you pay it or you don't, you know.
I I guess the question would be is is, um, would you be willing to have an increased utility bill to make online payments be free? Not with spreading it through the whole system.
So then I would phrase it, do you wanna subsidize other people's?
It's just that is, I think out of all of the online and, you know, electronic payments, that's that's the biggest complaint we get. Why do I have to pay fees? Well, because it's a convenience that you use your smartphone to pay fees anywhere else. It's like, oh, actually, at the secretary's, you're getting fees. And, you know, but I just, I just wanna throw that out there. I, for me, I I'm fine with.
Yeah, I I okay, I think just. So then.
Yep, so the question about trash, trees, and tax bills again are for residents of the Dexter only. So, um, we can, you know, two suggestions, either we ask that question of residency and then. Total logic to have those three sets of questions to be under that. Or in each of those have the not applicable, so those who it doesn't apply to them can move on from that question.
Well, so maybe maybe the way to do this is at the start of this question, will you say for city residents only?
Well, there wouldn't be city residents only, we have taxpayers and utility voters that are not.
Well, that's true. That's true.
So maybe for the trash and trees, they've got this framework. Cause I think those are for only the residents, right?
The, yeah, the definitely the 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 trash trees. The 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 trash trees.
We need to turn the tree, not, but the people who don't live here walk down the street, they get hit in the head with a tree from the right way, that's true.
But I just wanna have a not applicable or or something that if they're like, hey, I don't live in the city.
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking off the not, but that would be, that would be an option in the grid, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. All right, the last ones are residency and demographics.
So did you opt to drop, Justin, that you receive a water sewer repurposed from the city of Dexter? Question that used to come in this.
I did, yeah.
You opted to drop it, okay.
Yeah, so, um. You know, th- 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 thirty does does cover it. Um, I think the water sewer repurposed was. Intended to be a check, but the goal was to try and reduce the number of questions for the sake of reducing the. Time required to take the survey, so any any redundancy that should. I like that question.
I don't know, I just can't understand how somebody can see. How it will live in a city of Dexter when they're not there. And there's a sign at every entrance that says. Into the city of Dexter or city of weapons.
Almost everything will call it me taking, the first question we have to ask is, what is your address?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just just because it's frequent enough that folks outside of the city are.
I think it's less the question of them not realizing they live outside of the city and having no understanding of what the city. Staff covers, right?
You 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 definitely you'd be surprised.
Okay.
I I I I live in Dexter, therefore I call the city of Dexter.
Right, yeah.
To get service.
So so we have. Three, seven, nine questions associated demographics. There's nine questions here associated demographics. Yeah, is okay with those nine?
I have two questions.
Okay.
So, I'm forty two, please select the term that best describes your residence, single family, traditional, single family subdivision, apartment, condominium, or duplex. My only question was. What is it that we're actually interested in here? Are we interested in the type of structure they live in for some reason? Cause there are a series of questions that are about your type of structure. Or are we trying to figure out like where in the city they live? I wasn't sure.
Um, I I think that that's the whole we're from the twenty one survey.
Do we wanna, that's good or?
Yeah, I don't necessarily want me to show.
I think it's one of those that we can get the information somewhere else. We know who lives where.
But it just depends, like, it depends if we wanna match their responses. Like, do we wanna know, are these? What are your opinion to people in apartments? Or these people who live in the downtown or like the old village versus these people?
It's more of a geographical question. It's a geographical question. It would be. You have to work this way because.
Right.
Um, single family, traditional.
Community.
Yeah.
There are traditional single family structures in the old village and in the subdivisions.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I would just strike, I don't know that I care where the response is coming from.
For others to do that?
Yeah.
And my other comment was forty four, which is about employment status. It actually kinda, cause it it asks about being a business owner. In the same question. So I had proposed, I don't know that I need to also be the business owner or not. What did I say? Oh, so my question forty seven, I don't know what page that's on. I just pulled the standard employment status question. Working now, only temporarily laid off, or sick or parental leave, unemployed, retired, permanently or temporarily disabled, keeping house, going to school, other. And it just left all that applied. That's a pretty standard, like.
What pension number was that?
My forty seven. Would be a more complete employment status question if you're interested in that. And then if we wanted to know about if somebody's a business owner, I proposed fifty, a question fifty or some something similar, do you own a business? Yes, within the city of Dexter. Yes, outside the city of Dexter. No. Again, I don't know that I need to know that somebody's a business owner. I would find striking entirely, but it's not, I don't like them combining one question.
Well, so. Let me just follow up on this question for certain more context. So. I know that this is a. Meant to be announced, right? Do we want to give people the option to? Help us contact them?
I think you can add that at fifty one. Or or, sorry, my picture, at the after the open end, you could take, yeah.
Well, that after, is there anything else you wanna tell us? The final question could be, would you like someone to contact you?
Regarding your questions.
Regarding regarding your questions, comments. If so, please. I mean, I guess, you know, what you call a community survey engagement. Do you want to go that far?
Somebody wants to share their contact information. I think that's fine.
Is that something that? The staff would be going to, do they think that's valuable? Does it develop on, develop on or? You know, we gotta share their responsibility, I guess, in that case, you know.
Right.
But I mean, we're all trying to work our way, it'd be one way to be there. Okay, so then, back to forty four. I can never think about how we started the meeting if we did, but I think that's probably Jamie, if, you know.
Is there concerns with a business owner? Is there a version?
Yeah, and Dan O'Haver from Acton, he feels this out.
Yeah.
You know, you you if somebody checks the, I'm a business owner, you know it's coming from like, you know, different than a resident. Your perspective, it just, it just frames the perspective, I guess. I kinda think that's important, I'm not saying.
Right, right. I mean, if we're allowing them to self identify. You know, I I care what you're saying, like, is it important or not? They may not self identify if they are a business owner, but. Yeah. I guess I would hope. I mean, yeah, yeah, I'm fine with you getting it. I just would want it separate from employment status because they're different things. You could be, you know, you could own a business and like, I don't, not be working in it, I don't know. You could be going to school, it could be hard done.
I do have a question on the demographics, like the whole section. Is this a mandatory part that they have to fill out?
No.
I don't think any question is required. Or I I would advocate.
I'm wondering, I would get to the spot saying I'm in business and probably ditch the whole thing. I'm wondering.
Uh, we we can include a little little board at the top of residency and demographics, just reinforcing that fact.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is after twelve. A little bit after. Um, first of all. Justin and Josh and all staff that went and contributed to the survey, thank you for. Going through that again. Jamie, thank you for helping us through different ways. Phrase the question, make it a good spot, right?
Yeah.
The place that after was where we are, this is the five of us. Zach and Don will come and share this thing all play out. So we'll see a revised version of that when we can. Get it Monday.
I'm totally, uh, turned this around and put it as a, something like that.
If you want to, whatever, I was just teasing it. So that was a good discussion on the survey. There are. You know, another hundred pages to the work session of topics. Were there any, I just like to ask, cause I don't wanna try and drag this out. Are there any particular topics that were identified under number three on the agenda? That we will want to bring up quicker? And we can have another meeting in March, like do another meeting to cover this. I think these are effective at getting through to certain topics when we meet outside the board.
That reminded me, I had proposed to be questioned related to the charter amendments. I don't know if anybody saw that or if they had felt any compulsion to have a question in there about what directions might go. We've had a couple of conversations about. Blowing something to the public, perhaps in a way of a revised amendment. Is there any interest in that or?
I'm okay with solving the question, which I.
So I think, sorry, I.
Or she, or Justin can find it.
Okay, so he can throw it in when they look at it again. That cannot be because of the transfer property, that's.
Yeah, yeah. So we we do need to think about that. Jamie has asked us for our. Opinion on transfer property as in relation to thirty forty five block. There's a couple parcels there that are of interest to them. They both have a history. If you spread it up, you can't get, you know what that is, but I I wanna bring that back. Maybe if we have time, I might be able to touch on that a little bit. I didn't keep that in our report. Part of coming out of the last day of meeting.
Yes. Are you guys, I think we have two guests who came specifically about the.
How do I know they're interested in that? Oh, gotcha. Yeah. Allison is still listening? Could you have me do something about?
I can unmute her.
I'll try to unmute everybody. I'll just see if there's any non arranged participation. Let me ask Joe as well. Yeah, ask them all if they want to. So Nate, Allison, Joe, if you're still there. Um, we're offering a chance for non arranged participation at the end of the discussion of community survey. Is there any? Thing you'd like to say about that and or anything?
No, I I don't have any comment. I think it's a a great idea. I think the survey is a great idea, but nothing to add further.
Okay, Nate, we did not get into the discussion about extending water main across from the creek. Uh, we'll probably have to take that up at another time. Yeah, is there anything you wanted to share? I know you're interested in that, obviously.
Uh, no, I I guess I was just wanted to hear what was discussed. You know, it was. Uh, approved essentially on back in twenty seventeen for a project and just hopefully it's not a a concern. It's it's, the variance is is permitted for this project since it's such a similar use. So, um, just wanted to to hear what everybody had to say, so. I'll catch you next time.
Thanks for hanging with us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Allison, anything? Okay. Joe, anything to add?
Um, just on some of the topics, one of the topics about the virtual meetings, um, I know you're gonna put it on the survey, but I think. Not only should you keep the meeting, uh, upgrade the equipment, um, sometimes it can be hard to keep some of the people. Also, it would be helpful to have, uh, multiple cameras. You know, a lot of the systems will jump to whoever's speaking, so it would be good if, like, in the way you're configured now, you had three different sets of cameras on. The three different sides of the council table, so you could get a little bit more of the, uh. Uh, body language from the person that's speaking at the time. Also, I mean, obviously, it's easier to understand somebody when you can see them speaking. Uh, once masks aren't needed. Um, the other thing, uh, the question about the virtual meetings on why you may or may not get more participation. I find that it's a little bit difficult to get to the, um, information about how to get to the meeting virtually. The way I usually do it is I go on the website, I go to council, I go to agendas and meetings, I click on the agenda, and then I click on Zoom link. You already send out the, uh, you know, the weekly email. I think if you were to add a Zoom link there along with the link to the agenda and the packet, that that could be helpful for people. To be able to, um, attend if they wanted to. And, um. The survey, I I know you're putting a lot of work into it and everything. Um, I think it's great to get input from the public. I hope that you, after all the work you're putting into getting the survey together, that I hope that it is used, um. And that, there is a potential when it comes to surveys to be able to abuse and manipulate things either from the responses or from how you interpret the data. So I'm hoping that there's a good faith effort to make this a productive, uh, effort for the council and the community, so. Thanks very much. I know these, uh, sessions, three hours going back and forth over a document can be very tough, so appreciate all the work you all are doing and, uh, keep up, good job.
Joe? Does anybody else wanna say anything before we?
You can ask Allison.
Allison? Are you there?
Hi, hi, yep, I'm here, sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Is there anything you would like to say to us under non-arranged, since you participated and listened this morning?
Um, no, I think that, um, I'm not sure exactly what Nate said. I had to step away for a second, but I was just most interested in hearing the conversation about the, um, water main as, as it relates to our Mill Creek Brewery Project that will be before the planning commission on March seventh.
Gotcha. We're gonna bring that back as another discussion topic at a different time, but, um, we'll make sure you're aware of it.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any final thoughts from anyone? I appreciate everybody spending time on a Saturday to do this. Is it something that we should do another one on? Want to do one in March? We could start earlier. Sure, I just jumped. It'll be fifty degrees in March. Oh. Well, again, again, we should, we can bleed some of these in. Some of these were informational, you know, the four twenty-five agreements.
Yeah.
You know, you hadn't seen that, or not everybody had seen it. We were trying to make sure you got to see those things.
Yeah.
Um, I do think the transfer property needs to be talked about sooner than later, well, at some point in time, it's not like critical, but, um.
I'm just, yeah, we'll go to a gentleman, break it.
And then the, the special, okay. Alright, we'll do that.
If Sean, I have a question, just because I was at a last meeting.
Yeah.
Um, the goals and objectives document, the one has, that's another line. Is, are we good to go with that?
I would like to bring that back at some point. If we're gonna conclude these, I'd like to bring that back for adoption, yes.
Okay, that's, because I mean, I, that's part of the document, so.
Yeah, that, 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 that's, that's always gonna ask it. Same question as you, if, if you wanted to do another one.
Then I would.
To, 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 to try and finalize that, it's not.
Well, we don't have to adopt it, you know, it's not valid, Jennifer, Monday, we don't have to adopt it in March, but if we wanna wait till we get the survey questions back, in case we wanna modify and finalize that, but sometime prior to we get it into the budget thing, we should adopt the whole, so they have direction on
Yeah.
how to do the budget, which means it's, it's a merger or early, early April thing, because we're expecting you to put the budget to them, and it's funny, you know, they're like.
We made it through it once, right? Did we make it through it once, all the way? Okay.
Although, although, I think I have it in that, in that timeframe question. Um, when are we hoping to get the survey out and when do we want it due?
If, if you, if you can get the survey back to us. Well, if you're able to do it that fast, and we, I'll call the lesson, and I can see what I'm, I'll hold you.
Right, I think we'll talk about having it out for a month, so I said it's ready, it could be up in.
Four weeks or something, or, okay.
And then we could talk about, I don't have any suggestions, or you could suggest, just like having, you know, the data collection method. So the reminders and email updates, and a little newsletter, that sort of thing.
So.
You have, so yeah, postcard.
The postcard idea.
Yeah, that's great. Hey, what do you want to do, guys?
I didn't get next Saturday with the.
I don't think we're doing, no, I, I think we said we're not gonna do one.
So, the reason I asked, with the Mill Creek one, I think the chat considers it now instead. Um, so there's a bit of a time sensitivity as far as being able to like feed that to.
Well, right now, we're not putting the water main under the tree.
Right.
I mean, I mean, I mean, that's, they're, they're, I, what, we should, we need to evaluate their proposal as they've brought it in. And if we decide to jump into that process and do something outside of it, I mean, I'm personally comfortable with them having the well there. Okay, I also think that it's a good planning discussion to talk about having water over there, if we see bigger things, then we'll.
Yeah, well, my whole objective was to make sure that.
Uh, right, right, and, and, you know, and in context with, you know, the potential for a roundabout, which we had some discussions on with the road commissioner over the last two weeks, you know, you don't wanna construct a roundabout and then have to tear it up with the water main, you know, that perfect. So I mean, if there's some bigger planning things that we could do, and then we need to think about that, but the timing of the roundabout is not, at the earliest, it's twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
So we have, you know, three plus years to figure out this question. I don't think we're trying to jump to do it, you know, in time. Anyway, I mean, same way, I think it's a longer term question, especially given it's quarter million dollars. Sense? Maybe we can, anyway.